We got thirteen questions in thirty minutes.
Yeah, that's a lot.
I had suggested to Betty and Kathy that under roles we drop question three because question two really, the question four really deal with those issues. The other one I suggested, it's under economy. Do you have priorities or ideas about the issues or areas of economic improvement that you're interested in pursuing for Oregon City? While it isn't really covered before, I would, I would under question six feel that if the person felt that economic issues were important, they would address it in probably at question six.
Do we need to incorporate that into the question? Or do we just know? Okay. Just see if they come up with it on their own.
Yeah, that was kind, I mean, kind of along the same question and I'm sure it'll be dealt with in other answers, but one thing that occurred to me is we're also appointing an urban renewal commissioner.
Good point.
And there's no reference to any question about urban renewal.
Good point.
I think there needs to at least be some, some minimal response to find out their understanding of urban renewal. Or, I don't know where to put it, but it could, maybe it can be incorporated with one of those questions that talks about economic development.
Maybe in place nine.
I just felt we shouldn't not have a question like that when we're...
You want to ask what, what do you know about economic renewal?
Well, I don't know.
Can you explain to?
I don't know what the problem is. I mean, I would say one of the, what, the questions that we had for the urban renewal candidates, we have those, one of those could probably be applicable or somehow.
Do you have anything Nancy still on your computer and maybe we could just snag one of those questions off of that? That's a good point, Rocky.
So it doesn't help the deleting questions?
But that's okay.
At least we've got some room.
That's important, Rocky.
Yeah, I think it's good.
So we are...
You ask, you get to ask the questions since you're putting them forward.
Well, I wanted to know where it goes in the order.
Well, I think in economy is right.
Economy is correct, I think.
Okay, so what question was that?
So we're gonna take nine out and we'll replace it with the urban renewal question.
Yeah, well, that's a great idea.
Okay, so for sure we're eliminating three and nine, but we're switching nine to an urban renewal question, correct?
That's just, yeah.
Okay, so before I start marking my pages, I wanted to be sure.
I want to read some of the suggestions.
Yes, please.
For instance, do you have a specific, having specific projects or goals for urban renewal that you support or do not support, or feel need to be included or deleted from our program?
Or? That's a good one.
How do you see the role of the urban renewal member and what would be your expectation as a member of this commission, urban renewal commission?
I think that one's more vague.
Yeah, I like number, I like number one.
I don't.
I would like to suggest that maybe, maybe neither one of those would be ideal because they're both pretty specific. I think that's a question that's far easier to answer when you're on the commission.
What do you think about, what do you think about a question, something like, tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City?
That's a good idea.
Because it's more basic. Do they even understand what?
Some kind of knowledge about that. Okay, so is Rocky asking nine then?
It's his fault.
It's his fault. Tell us what...
I love it.
Okay, do we want to sign questions then?
Sure.
Let's just go down.
Okay.
Shall we just take an order?
Sure.
Betty, to my right, you want to take one?
Sure.
I'll take two. Rocky, four.
I guess that's three, oh, three, yeah, four.
Kathy, five.
Five.
Six for Betty again. You guys switched places with... Seven for me.
How about skip and go to Kathy for eight and come back to, or we could move, I mean, they don't, they don't want to know.
They don't have to do that question just because I brought it up.
Eight, eight, eight for you.
Rocky and nine for me.
Nine for you.
Okay.
Betty, ten.
Wait, okay.
Eleven for me. Twelve for Rocky. And that works out nicely. Kathy?
Very nicely.
I just printed off the urban renewal one and I'll go get it, so whichever, whoever wants to have that one.
So it looks like Kathy will be asking.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. And then can you explain the chart?
Sure. Me being mayor and commissioners, this is a, kind of a selection tool that we use from time to time in human resources selection when we, we used it actually during the economic development manager recruitment and selection interview process since we have so many groups. There's nothing here, it's just really, you start out with the first candidate in the, in the lower left-hand corner.
Okay.
And then as you proceed through the interview process, you know, the second candidate interviews and is either better or not.
Oh, okay.
And so then, then that name moves, whatever, whoever does the best on the second interview moves to that box. And so on, and so on, and so on, so that when you're at the, at the end here at number 10, whoever is the best, you know, you feel is the best candidate based on the interview process, it, they normally rise to the top.
Bill, can I ask you to step out a moment? I can't force you to, but if you, if you would, please.
Okay, got it.
So it's a relatively simple, you know, and then it also does provide a, a, you know, a ranking so that the individuals who didn't make it is down the lower one and so on. Now, just bearing in mind, this is, this will be public record where in the, with a HR process, it's a test or an exam and that, that is exempt under, under the public records law, so just, you know.
So we can use it or not?
That's your call.
Yeah.
It's a tool.
Yeah.
If you want to use it, it helps especially with a large number of candidates.
Sure.
To keep everybody, you know, everybody clear on what you, what you want, but, you know, again, it's just a tool. I'm not saying to use it, I'm not saying not to use it.
And then at the end of the day, do we have to turn in all of our questions? Anything we wrote down to you?
It also becomes public record.
Okay.
So when the whole process is all done, then just turn your whole notebook into me. Don't get rid of any papers, just turn it all into me.
All right, got it. Thank you. Okay, then we're gonna go through this and then what are we gonna do at the end?
I was gonna suggest, well, I, one suggestion I had is that when we come together on Wednesday, we come maybe with our top three and compare our top threes, see if, hopefully some people will fall into all of our top three. What do you think?
Well, you know, I thought about that too. I'm wondering if we couldn't do our top three tonight, hand it in to Nancy I'd and she could calculate it and see if there's any one common person that's in all three of our top threes?
We could do that unless we feel uncomfortable, unless we feel individually that we have to give it some more thought.
Oh, I see, I see.
But we could do that at the end if we feel comfortable enough that we can select our top three, but if we don't feel comfortable enough, I'd rather wait until Wednesday. But we could just see how we feel at the end of the session.
Yeah, because I thought once we were done, we could talk about it amongst ourselves, but we can't.
No, we can't talk.
In groups of two, you may.
And actually, there's no, you don't need to put your name on here if you don't want to. If you want to remain, you know, have it anonymous. I don't know.
Can we put someone else's name?
Okay, Rocky Smith, is that, is that Sam?
It's M-Y-T-H-E.
Rocky had five pages of notes and no one has said anything.
No way.
He just drew faces. I would do want to pass a little bit of advice on from Bill Kabizman because I know there were one or two inquiries about, gee, it's frustrating not to be able to talk as a group, you know, about, about the situation. So, his advice was, and this is, I've seen this same advice before, so it's pretty consistent. You know you can't talk about it as a group, however, you can have one-on-one discussions with each other, you just can't do, count the noses and do a daisy chain vote. You can't do that. But you can, it is expected that you would have conversations with one another perhaps about the pluses and minuses of some of the candidates.
I just like to kind of debrief after, you know, kind of...
Just do not deliberate toward a decision and then you're fine.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, you got question one, six, and ten, right?
I got one, six, and ten.
Good.
You did it.
Well, I just had him make sure I got my numbers right.
Either that or we both got them wrong.
No, you did fine, you did great.
All right.
And would you like me to get Mr. Blanchard?
Yes, please.
Oh, please, thank you.
Ooh, we're right on time, aren't we?
Wow, look at us.
I'm better.
Welcome, Bill.
Hi, Bill, have a seat. Do you want to explain?
Yeah, we're going to go through a list of questions and after we get through them, then we might be asking you some follow-ups. But in any case, Betty's gonna start the, start with you with the first question.
Thanks for coming down. We've got a lot of great applicants, so it's gonna be a tough job, but our first question to you is, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Okay, I moved into the city about thirty-three and a half years ago and I was working for the police department at the time and I told my wife that they've got nice streets in this town, they're well taken care of, the parks are there, and I says, you know, I think we need to move here and we are and we've been here for thirty-three and a half years, so with that, I care a lot about the town and the people and stuff like that, not just as a past employee or current one. Some of my volunteering thing that I have done over the years is, I was on the county traffic safety commission for a while and I think I was vice chair there, I was on the transportation advisory committee here and ended my term as chair in, at the end of 2009 and I was fortunate to be able to be involved with a group of people as, as a team and work through some tough issues such as the transportation utility fee, TMAF as it was called back then, maybe not popular, whatever, but we worked with the consultants, they came on board, presented their stuff. Another example would have been the jug handle and we got the technical transportation pieces of that put in there. I have volunteered over the years, I worked as a community policing officer, which most of us did during a period of time. At that time, I was assigned to the different schools like Gardner and Gaffney Lane and I did some work at the high school, so I've worked with groups and as far as I know, I've got a lot of translatable skills that I can bring to the table to work with you as a team to move forward with the city, so I felt that I needed to put my hat in the ring, so to speak.
That's great.
Very good.
Thank you.
What do you see as the role of the city commission in the decision-making process of the city?
The city commission itself, in my mind, is a policy board that sets policy goals and objectives to direct the city, where they go, and that comes from not just the five people working on it, that comes from a whole group of volunteers, the CIC, transportation advisory committee, lots of different kinds of activities within the city to coalesce the ideas and where we're gonna go with the city. So I see the commission as a policy group to guide and not as micromanagers of staff, not trying to do the staff work. And there's a lot of stuff, I mean, I can talk some more, but I know I only have a half hour.
We figure about two minutes a question.
Well, if I have extra time, then I can talk more.
There you go.
Then we'll ask you some more questions.
Oh, oh, well, maybe better talk a long time then.
This question for kind of, or, well, I won't even say the number because it doesn't make sense anymore. Bill's kind of on that last question, and what is your understanding of the commission and the relationship between the commission, city manager, and staff?
Well, I kind of touched on that in my last answer, but the commission, and I know each one of you have a different hat to wear, this is your responsibility, the mayor says you're gonna do these parts and so you've got stuff to do. I think part of the commission is to be involved and partner with other agencies like the state of Oregon, Clackamas County, Metro, transportation, example, the Milwaukee Light Rail, which I did a little bit of that when I was on the chair of the transportation advisory committee. So I know you've got a lot of duties to do, in fact, I hope you don't end up with a neck spring with all the hats on top of your heads. So basically, policy and you work with the staff, I've watched a lot, and it's really cool that we've got this new setup in here because it was just starting when I got off the transportation committee, but I can watch these meetings, it's all online, there's a lot of technical stuff, technology in this city that's fantastic, which, my hat's off to you for stuff that you've done. Anyhow, so, so the answer is, you've got to be able to work with federal on down because we're all team players and all part of a, a group of folks within the country as an example, I mean, that's getting pretty global, but I know you've got a lot of work to do and I don't, I'm gonna be quiet.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, are you familiar with the current city commission goals and if so, would you consider any of the goals more important than others?
I'm familiar with a few of those, if not all of them. I think one of the goals is, and you've already kind of addressed that for this, you're the Rivers Project and the Hermiting, Hermitinger, did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because that to me is a showcase of how you can take a place and bring it on up to, up to snuff and then make it a showpiece for the city and it has to do with our heritage because we're the oldest city in the, in the state of Oregon, excuse me, Oregon Territory, let's go back a little bit. So I see us working through those issues. I know that we're gonna have a rollback on water rates, I was watching the CIC meeting here, that the last one I believe that they had, where they had the technical presentation and the four options that are out there and what that is, and that's one of the goals you've got to work through, if I remember 2014, to have a conclusion to that. For me, that's one of the issues that we've got to work on as a commission and as a city to come up with citizen input, same format as we did with the TMAF back a few years ago, because you can't, you can't run the infrastructure of the city and not pay attention to it, it'd be just like driving your car and not changing oil for five years, what's gonna happen?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So those are some of the things that I see. The library's another one. I think it's time to kind of move that forward a little bit, if we can afford to do it, and that's the key, can we afford to do it, and let the people out there vote on what they want so we know what, what they want and then try and, you know, because we're driven by our customers and our, I mean, the citizens and the people, the folks that live in this town are, pay the paychecks, et cetera. I know you folks get a lot of overtime and make big money.
That's right.
David pays his time and a half for like nights tonight. Anything else for that question? Okay, what do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years and do you have any suggestions on how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
I look at them as opportunities and the three things that I think are kind of important to me and probably to the city and probably you commissioners is replacing staff, they're a valuable asset to this city to be able to get work done and in working on the transportation advisory committee, I felt that, and still feel, the staff that we have is top drawer, for lack of better words. Another thing that I thought was kind of important to me would be to work on the improvement of the economic development within the city and that is replacing our largest taxpayer that's no longer here. And I think that's pretty important because I know, I know this is being taped, but I'm sure people are gonna watch this and they're gonna say, Doug Garnett, I don't want my taxes to go up unnecessarily or you, a huge bump on our property taxes, so we've got to work on that one in the next three years and I know that it's being talked about and worked on, it's not like it's, and I would say probably the third thing that I would consider would be, I gotta stop and think about that one.
That's all right.
I would say probably getting the library out there. I personally don't want to see us make a misstep where we build something like a fire hall and don't have the funds to staff it, so my concern as a person who takes care of my money and, and we, we try and watch what we spend, that that would be something. And, and how to do it, to quickly answer that part real simple is we've got all these boards and commissions that are out there, we've got all these mechanisms to put something together and then we've got testimony from people, questions, et cetera, we've got the master plan, all these different plans that are out there and they can dovetail together. That's what the commission does is kind of figure out and chart that course by using a staff, so. I don't know if I answered your question or not, those are three things that I, I feel important.
Thank you.
We have a special topic dealing with your second most important thing, economics, and what is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City and what do you think we, as a city, can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Well, that's a lot of stuff.
I know.
But can I write it down for you?
Welcome to the city.
Yeah, there you go. It's complex, we've got, what, thirty-one thousand or so folks in this town and I would say that economic development, all right, I'm really excited about what we have here as a nucleus of people in the town and the confluence of the rivers and where we're at geographically with the freeway going through, you know, and the bypass and things like that. I went to the chamber meeting last week that they had for the breakfast and I just knocked my socks off of the enthusiasm with the business folks in this town. There's no shortage of ideas and things of that nature to get, accomplish what you're talking about, it's just a matter of prioritizing and working through the issues and working hard at it. There's a, I'm really excited about living in Oregon City, it's amazing what is here. We've got the heritage, McLaughlin House and things of that nature. So I think that we can work through that. I'm a task-oriented person, which if I'm on the, some of the folks that worked with me on the transportation advisory committee know that one, I tried to get through the agenda every night and move, 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 move. So I don't have a lot of specifics, it's too short a time and a half an hour to flesh out a lot of stuff. And there's stuff, excuse me, that's maybe not a cool word to use, but there's a lot of stuff going on right now, a lot of plans like, and I'm sure you got goals and objectives for the next year when you did your retreat and I think those will come about. I think if we listen to the citizens through the groups we have and coalesce all those inform, pieces of information and work forward, there's gonna be somebody that comes up with a, a home run and we've just got to work through it and keep plugging away. It ain't gonna be easy, sorry, my English ain't too good, never mind.
Story of my life, what are you talking about? That's why I was looking to invite you over there. Thank you.
All right, how would you address the fact that the city commission sometimes has made unpopular decisions and the how, I think that's current and future and the past, how would you relate to individuals whose opinions differ significantly from that of your own?
Well, I know there's a lot of pressure and stress at times and I would take care of myself so that I could be present and deal with these things. I dealt with differences of opinion for twenty-five years as a police officer, so that kind of stresses the pressure.
Yeah.
This is different, I'm hoping it's not as stressful as a commission.
Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
Can you throw a way in on that one?
I've never been a police officer, I can't help you.
So, for me is to listen, be an active listener and yes, people aren't always gonna agree with me, the five of us won't agree all the time, but let's listen to what's going on, what somebody has to say, respect what they have to say and make decisions and then move on to the next, as we used to say in police work, move on to the next call, don't cogitate too much on the thing, but if it needs to be revisited, let's don't hesitate to do that. So, you know, citizens will come up here and talk at this desk to you folks that they have a passion about and I think that's important to listen to.
Absolutely.
And make decisions. So I've had experience in people who don't like what I do, I'm sure there's folks that feel that way, but there's a process in this town to go through to, to get what you want, so to speak. And I'll be real quick, an example, when I was working as administrative officer to the chief, I, a lot of times would get folks that would come in and say, where's, where's the crime, where's the best place to live? And I would talk with them about that and then I would kind of turn it around, I'd say, and it's true, drive down the street. If you like this town or if you like that street and you see what's there, same kind of cars, it's a nice house, or it fits with what you're used to, then go ahead and look at that, because the crime and accident rate, you know, I can't, I can't make your decision for you. So I would work with that person or couple or whatever and try and help them out and that's one thing I'd like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now the trick question.
Oh.
We always have to have one. Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Urban renewal, that's an interesting topic. Do you want a summary or an in-depth?
If you could tell us what it is.
In fifteen minutes or less.
Whoa, it's three minutes or less.
Oh, sorry, three minutes or less.
Okay, urban renewal is where you take an area where there's not a lot of going on there, the words in, see, I studied this a little bit from the state, the county, I went to Portland Development Commission on their website and looked at that, I looked at ours, we've got a really concise, nice area on urban renewal and land use and zoning in the website. So urban renewal is you take an area, you get the stakeholders that are in there and you decide you're gonna try and bring in private development to make it better, so the city needs to put some infrastructure in there, for instance, making better streets or the sewer or cleaning up, what's that called, garbage, methane? Okay, so you try and work and you get those things put together and you try and encourage growth, you try and encourage business to come in and, and do that. In order to do that, you have to be willing to put some money up to help get this going, either in-kind services like putting the, the street up, you know, let's say there's a new street there or a parking lot, you want to work with that. And the mechanisms that I understand to do that is like bonds and you freeze the tax rate in that area, you get all the stakeholders and a lot of citizen input and they don't necessarily have to be citizens in the town, just people to give you ideas on what they want for that particular plan area. Then you work on it, you come up with a plan, you get a few people to come in, we've got some stuff downtown that's really good, Main Street, there's different grants that the urban renewal commission has, has tried to improve and as I read that, it doesn't necessarily have to be a building or a business, it can be pave the street or fix this, you know, like stuff we've done downtown and other areas. So that's, I'm assuming, I didn't go into it in a lot of depth, the history of where our urban renewal has gone and, you know, increased, grew it to a hundred million and all those different things, so I think we need to be responsible. I did find out in reading about urban renewal that there's something, it's, it's a very complex issue, so I can't explain it completely in even a half hour, but some of the problems that I saw when I did the homework on that and looked at from the sixty, seventies and forward on urban renewal is, there's gonna be a difference of opinion, there's gonna be people who say and groups who say, it ain't right, it's not good, we're, and there's gonna be people saying, well, you gotta take a chance, you've gotta do a little bit of, of growing and spend some money in that respect and pay it back. So there's mechanisms financially which, I don't see the financial person here, but once you decide what you're gonna do through the stakeholders and the meetings and stuff, then you go forward like we've done in a few of them and I think that's, I didn't specifically answer that because I got a feeling this was gonna be a question, I think that's where we can do some economic development in this town and move on. We've got a history, but let's start today and let's move forward and go there, get there.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
What are the strengths you would bring to the city commission?
I don't have a ticket book. Oh, I can't bring that in.
You can't bring a ticket book.
Okay, I think one of the strengths that I have is the ability to work with people, communicate, I've got background in areas that I can help, for instance, I can probably be up to speed pretty quick, I know where you're at in your budget process because I did it for ten to twelve years in the police department with staff, you know, the command staff, et cetera, I crunched the numbers, sat next to the chief when we got rid of dispatch, so I've been there when we've had real tight times. Another example would be when we lost three officers, three firefighters, and three public works people when, with major... three firefighters and three public workspeople when, with Major 550, whatever passed and three percent growth. So, I've seen that. I've seen the other. So, I've got budgeting I can bring to it. I've got leadership skills that I've demonstrated by the TAC, County Traffic Safety, et cetera. I can give you one quick example to give you an idea of the leadership. When I was on, working as a traffic officer in the seventies and on the County Traffic, County Traffic Safety Board, get the words right, Commission, I went down to the Oregon Traffic Safety Commission at the time and we didn't have computers. We've got ODOT's information on traffic crashes. You need to be able to direct your deputies where they're going to go for traffic enforcement. So, I talked with a gentleman, I can't remember his name, Dean down there, and I came back up here. I had a plan. I came back up here and I talked to Ralph Groner, who's a commissioner, and Skoko and Schumacher were the other commissioners. And I says, why don't we try and get a renewable, three-year renewable federal grant for a microcomputer and keep track of our accidents in this, in this, excuse me, the county, not the state. And the crashes and the reports to try and use some programs to figure that out and the citations and try and marry up what's going to happen. And that worked really well. Another example of my leadership skills is I staffed the Traffic Safety Board. And in those days, they did a couple of things. One, they held hearings on code violations instead of, and now they do it through the court, different mechanisms now. But we started something, and I don't remember who could come up with the idea. I'd like to say I did, but I don't know because it was a team effort. We came up with an idea of traffic watch. We went to the Hillendale people. We put the word out. Hillendale people came to, and they filled up the old commission chambers. And they got down there, they rolled up their sleeves and they says, we've got a problem with traffic in this neighborhood. And we look at different things. We looked at taking Claremont and barricading the middle of it so they couldn't race through the streets. We had people come out that were on that group of citizens and they went down and they took the radar gun and they went out and did spot speed studies so they could kind of get an idea. They worked on sidewalks all up and down Claremont. They came up with an idea that worked. They went back in the old archives and looked up everything from the beginning. I'm not talking too much. Anyhow, point being is we put together that traffic watch. There was a lady who was kind of at the state level, a grants person. I saw her after I retired the store. And she said, you know what, Bill? We took that. I just got back a couple of weeks ago. We took that traffic watch idea and we've been implementing it throughout the state ever since. And I go, you're kidding. I didn't know that. So, there's an idea of my citizenship, working, even though I was employed, working with teams to get something done in the city and it mushroomed beyond what I thought it would ever do.
Right. All right. Thank you.
This position requires a significant time commitment, not only for the commission meetings, but for assigned committees as well. Do you have adequate time to devote to this position? And what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the city commission?
Yes to the answer. And my long-term goal would be to work with you folks, come up with a plan so we can get the goals and objectives, intermediate, which is roughly business, it's about five years, get those things onboard and get them going and just keep the wheels moving in the town. Because there's a lot of stuff, I'm going to get, yell that for using the word stuff too much here, but there is. There's a lot of business decisions to be made and I hope I can make that. I mean, I've got experience in that area. I've got some training and background in engineering and business at college. So, I want to bring that to the table and see if we can do something.
I'm not going to say you applied anything, but you said five years, so I'll just go ahead and infer. Go ahead, Rocky.
Why would you be the best choice? We have ten applicants, so why would you, you've already spoke a little bit about that, but why would you be the best choice for our city commission?
I can step right in and get started on the budget and things like that. I know where you're at in the process there from having done it. I've got leadership skills. I may not have the best of everybody there that's of the ten people because I was really amazed at the talent that applied for this position. So, I can bring these things. I care about the city. I've lived here a long time and I've worked in the city. And I'd like to be able to bring that to the city and be objective. I want to be a commissioner for the citizens of the city, not one special interest group, not one department in the city, but the people that are here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself? And do you have any questions for us?
How am I doing on time?
Five minutes and fifty-six seconds.
Oh, I will get short because I don't want to have somebody downstream. I don't want you folks here forever.
We're going to be here forever.
It doesn't matter.
That's that overtime I talked about earlier, right?
That's right.
Okay. I'm sure there's a lot of stu, a lot of questions I could ask. But I only have one question. My wife asked me something and I says, I really don't have the answer. But when I go before the commissioners and the mayor and I'll ask them and see what they say, can I have a vacation? Thank you.
You betcha.
No, I don't have anything more because I need to do a lot more studying and get, get up to speed if I'm appointed. If I'm not, I'm thinking about running anyhow. So, you may see me again.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so it wasn't an inference or an implication?
Kathy has one more?
No.
No?
Oh.
That's it. She asked it. Okay. Well, thank you, Bill.
Oh, that's all.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Kevin, Hells is going to be our next person. I don't know if he's here yet.
Big break time.
Yeah, we can, yeah, why don't we just, why don't we just relax a bit?
Okay, so I can keep marking up my book.
You can keep on marking up your book, yes.
I haven't gotten it done yet. I'm not as quick as some people.
I'm going to continue to fill up my Super Bowl, huh? Yeah.
I love it, Rocky.
I don't know if that was last week or something. We're a little late.
Out of the list, out of the list here, I think there's only one person I don't know of, one or another.
Do you find out what your sister does?
What?
Do you find out what your sister does?
I don't know. I barely know what I do. I just keep.
Look at us again.
Yeah, right.
Temptating to get the memo.
Multicolor.
We've got to, one of the Tuesday mornings, Thursday, I guess, Tuesday morning, we have a C four committee to Metro where we talk about the county.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin. Got a series of questions that we're asking all the candidates.
Okay.
And welcome and appreciate your application. We've got some very fine applicants. We're really happy with that. And Betty's going to get the ball rolling.
So, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community services, service, and why you wish to serve.
A potted version of the, the background, mainly working through, always worked for nonprofits and things like schools and other groups similar to local government. So, either working for complete charities or nonprofits, working with limited resources, therefore, maximum effect. My motto is always maximum effect, minimum effort, because minimum effort usually meant minimum cost. Also, working always with organizations that relied largely on people's goodwill. That's usually the biggest resource you've got to play with. And the most, it's the richest resource you've got. So, when you work with that, you can work with other things. So, my interest is in, is to see what can be done. The other, the other reality, I've worked with a lot of different charities, usually on project-based things. So, the interest in this particular appointment is there seems to be a specific need at the moment. The great news is you've got ten people to pick from.
Right.
Which is brilliant. Maybe some of us will go and do other things even if we don't do this. But there seems to be a need at the moment. So, I wasn't thinking so much that I would be a perfect commissioner, but I might be a really good fit for the moment, depending on what I think you're looking for. So, yes, I'm used to working with small teams on projects to bring about cohesion to move something forward.
That's great. Thank you.
What do you see as the role of the city commission and decision-making process of the city?
It's a dual thing. One is to elicit thought. And then the second thing is to then try and channel it. Because once you tell people they can have a voice, that you then have to deal with it. So, part of the problem is encouraging people to have a voice because you know they're going to mutter behind your backs, so they may as well say it aloud. But then having heard the voice, then how do you bring that about to actually some sort of consensus? So, what I see the job of, of the commission doing is actually consensus building. And you start that by doing information building and educational building. Because there's nothing worse than, than an illiterate electorate. You want people who are informed and conscious, who can then have a, a discussion about the issues and therefore come to a consensus that is the best for the community. And I suppose that the third element would be, how do you bring about that for the common good? Because everyone's going to have a slightly different idea of what the common good is. But the job of a board, commission, whatever, is to try and find out, what is it that actually in five years' time we will look back and say, that, that was for the common good. It wasn't for everyone's perfect good, but it was the common good and it made sense now, especially in hindsight. That I would imagine is what we're trying to sort of look back and see.
Great. Thank you.
What is your understanding of the commission, city manager and staff relationship? How they work together?
Simple answer is really well. In my limited observation, I got to sit in part of the retreat in January and I did last year as well. The city manager is the chief executive officer in terms of getting the work done. So, it's really important that the city manager has the commission's trust and faith. And you have each other's backs because the city manager ultimately is the one who should be doing the hands-on management of the, of the staff. There's nothing worse than having six bosses. We all know that. Everyone should only have one boss. The city manager has to have five, but at least you should be, be speaking as one voice.
Yes.
So, if, if there's any point when that's going to be the multiple best, Paul or David. But the, the real job is, the city manager also, I would say, is his job to make sure you're well-informed. You can only make decisions based on what you know. You're not full-time staff. You're not specialist in the field of political theory or anything like that. Or city, you probably weren't trained as city planners and managers. What you are is the wisdom characters of the community. That's who we choose you to be at this time. His job is to make sure you've got the resources to make wise decisions. Because then he doesn't have to carry the can, you know, if it happens to be the wrong one. You were the ones that made the decision. He was just implementing. But his job is to make sure his life is made easier by giving you the right information to make the decisions. That's what I think, David. I don't know what you're saying.
Sounds great to me.
Okay.
Hi, Kevin. Are you familiar with the city, current city commission goals? And if so, would you consider any of the goals more important than others?
You know, I was looking on the website and they still got the 2010 ones up, so I'm sorry.
We're waiting on this decision before we publish them, actually.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, Kathy. No, I couldn't pull them all out one at a time. I had things like financial, growth and sustainability, all those things. Is there anything that's more important? Some things will take more time and energy. Sometimes the, the most important things can be the easiest achieved. But I suppose what I was, they're the sort of the, the bedrock ones. The biggest thing I think you can do for the city is to make people glad to be here. If you have a community who actually like the city, I know it's not perfect, but you know, we're doing a darn good job. And, well, we've got to deal with this. We've got to deal with that. And still never enough money. But if you can make people genuinely, not just feel good, but actually be good about who they are and where they are and belonging to Oregon City, then everything else will find a place. Is one thing more important? No. No, it's, it's like having a family or a business. Everything's important, right from putting out the garbage to how you deal with people on a one-on-to-one basis. So, bit of a sidestep. I'm sorry, but it's.
That's okay. Thank you.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
Okay, sixty-four thousand dollar question. I think one of the, all of the economics is obviously a, a big lump of one. We have a, we have a city plan, both geographically and trying to develop different urban areas, main streets and all the rest of it. What I don't really feel as a, as a citizen is a sense of a city plan. So, if I were to say, one of the things that come up is a big picture view that gives, gives a sense not of historic district and a commercial district and all these people who live up on the hill, but a sense that actually that this is the bigger, improved Oregon City. And that there's an integration and an appreciation and a, a sharing of ownership of all those different bits. So, that was, that was what I would actually bring to it. I know there's a lot of little, little and big problems. But getting the overall sense of wholeness, a big sense of like how the parts integrate, the, the library and things like that, how these build the community. Those would be the, the big things. Everything else, if you have a clear sense of the overall plan, you can usually see where the best way that the jigsaw will fit together. And it's, I would say if there's a, a road not to go down, it's compartmentalizing things.
Okay. Thank you.
That's me again. What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? And what do you think we, as a city, can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
That's a big question. So, can you say it first bit again, please?
What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City?
Okay. In terms of the city finances?
Generally, in, in other, yeah, not, not necessarily the city government, the city as a whole.
All right.
The headline here was economy, incidentally.
Yes, you think. People spend money, presumably they have any. We, we tend to spend money on what's important to us and then what we want to encourage. I think people in Oregon City spend at least as much as anybody else. I'm not sure they choose to spend it in Oregon City. I, and I would go back to the image question here. We don't even have enough cachet to keep our own dollars in town, let alone to draw others in. I don't think there's a high enough level of ownership of Oregon City by Oregon City in that sense. You know, other people's movie cinemas are better than ours. Other people's restaurants are better than ours. I don't believe that, but I think that's what, is what, is the image. We're, we're still allowing ourselves to live in a, as a sort of second cousin status to the surrounding towns. And I think that's part of our economic reality. We don't even spend our own money here. And we don't seem to be encouraged to do so. You know, silly idea, you know, what would you, what would I do if somebody gave me a little bit of money? I'd buy everyone in Oregon City a bumper sticker that says, I love Oregon City.
Oh.
And just see what happens.
Yeah.
Just start saying that and see what happens then to the economic reality. People will spend money as soon as they think it's a cool thing to do. And they, they like, they seem to like at least the new Safeways. It looks classy. It looks attractive. It looks like the sort of thing you have in more upscale cities. And people like, people love, all of us, we would love to be successful, to be perceived, to perceive, perceive ourselves as being successful. And so, to create an environment that says, this is a classy place. And so to create an environment that says, "This is a classy place." Doesn't have to be expensive, doesn't have to be snobby, doesn't have to be all the things we don't want to be from any other cities around here. But we can be all the positive things that they have, and they benefit from. So, no, I'm not, yeah, that would be my magic wand. Buy a bumper sticker for everyone and see what happens.
I like it.
It'd be a relatively cheap magic wand, and might even work, who knows?
How do you address the fact that the city commission sometimes makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals who opinion differs significantly from your
Any commission that doesn't make unpopular decisions is not doing its job. It's the same as any sort of management job, that's part of the job. How do you relate to people? As you know, I originally come from a place a little further east of here.
Well, it does what shifts you forward.
Okay, sure. Or a long way west.
Back east.
And, yes, back east. I was brought up in very much in a parliamentary system. I mean, in our schools, we are taught parliamentary debating. And so the whole nature of that is, you argue your case as vehemently and energetically as you possibly can, and then you go and have a drink afterwards. So that's, you know, that's the way I was, that was the culture I was brought up in. It's like, if you feel something, yes, we want passion, we want desire, we want all that good stuff that says, "This is energy." And then it's like, okay, well, we both can't be right. What are we going to do about it? And that's why I would say, the other thing comes out of commission, and that's collaboration. If we know we have to move forward, then the more we can build collaboration and consensus, the more... I think it's really important that when government presents a unified face to the community. Because if we, as a small group, whatever group it is, a charity, or a team, or whatever it is, if we can't present a unified front, then it's not really fair to expect people to follow our lead and get behind us. So, I forget what the question was, but that's part of the answer.
I just want to warn you of one thing you were talking about, go out and have a drink afterwards. You can't, we can't go out together and have a drink and come to consensus at the bar.
Well, at the bar. No, no, no. Consensus, that's the prize. That's the prize.
That's it. That's right.
Okay, Kevin. Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Not my best-known topic. I don't know more than I've read in the newspapers, and obviously coming to a few of the meetings that were engendered out of some of the conversations last year. I understand from an economic point of view, the need to create areas of special interest for urban development. But I also understand that our cities can too easily get compartmentalized and create areas of heartlessness, the whole death of the inner city back in the 60s and 70s. So again, I'm not really answering your question, because I don't know that much about it at this point. My approach to it, though, would be to say, always, I would always want to try and keep the big picture in view, so that we're not having a solution for Rose Park and a solution for Kenema and Tower Vista, you know, while it doesn't need anything. Because occasionally, even Tower Vista does need something. As a business owner, I have to say, I feel a little bit miffed when I'm told my taxes cannot benefit my business because it's not at the right address. So, yeah, I've got a couple of personal opinions about, like, it would be nice if I could share that. And just because I'm not on the right street, or something. I've yet to sort of come to peace with the equality of that, but I understand the logic of it. So I would, I would be interested, obviously, you're looking for someone to come on and be up and running, and no one's going to be up and running as fast as you on this sort of information unless they've done the job before. And I believe you've got some people who have, and if that's really important, then that's great. I don't see myself having any great answer to that, except maybe the ability to think critically and with a bigger picture, and to see how it might relate to other things.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, what are the strengths you would bring to the city commission?
Humor.
Humor.
Okay.
I love it.
I am a collaborator, as most of you know, I work a lot in theatre. There's no money. Everyone's working on their free time, and we still have to get a show out on time, and the audience has to enjoy it. So I don't like compartmentalizing my own life. So I don't like having, you know, a job bit here and a boring bit there. I like every 24 hours to be rich. What I would be delighted to bring is any analytical skills and thinking skills, but also, I've done a fair bit of work on helping people communicate. And if I could bring that, if that was a need, if that was a perceived need, I would really enjoy helping a group, as well as finding my own voice in that group, helping a group actually find the way to say, because finding the words is so often the major part of finding the solution. And so that's something I would like to contribute.
Thank you.
This position requires a significant commitment of time, not only for the commission meetings, but for the assigned committees that I assigned you. You have the adequate time to devote to this position, and what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the city commission?
I do have enough time, I'm delighted to be able to announce. I actually have a new staff member starting on the 1st of March.
Okay.
So, thank you. So part of my time, therefore, now will be freed up from the business. I've also looking at, coming off one or two of the charity boards I'm on at the moment, because my term is coming up this year. Having been through the planning process and the historical review board process twice in the seven years, it'll be seven years on Patrick's Day, St. Patrick's Day, we bought Ainsworth. So I've been through the mill here, as a consumer, twice. And I was thinking, in fact, last time I was in the planning department, somebody said, "Well, you've done this a couple of times now, you should get on the other side." And so even before this came up, that was the possibility. So whether it's at the commission level, or historical review board, or planning, or something else where it'd be useful, I would be very happy to look at that. I feel I've been here long enough. I know you have to be born here, or be here 40 years to be a real native. She won't tell you what, somebody said that you have to be.
You've got to go back seven generations.
Yes, somebody has to be the first child born in the village. But you know what? I think you're much more accepting these days, so I'm willing, I've been here a lot, I feel like I'm a, seven years is a native enough.
Yes.
And I almost speak American, so...
Could've fooled me.
When I go home, that's what they say. They don't count me as English anymore. Yes, I'd be delighted to spend the time.
Great. And why would you be the best choice for a city commissioner?
I've got to say, only, it sounds corny, I know, but I've no idea if I'm the best choice. I really don't. It really is, who do you need in the team? I'm delighted you've got 10 people to pick from.
You are too.
And, you know, could I be a useful one? Yeah, I think so, I really do. Because of some of the things I've said already. I tend to be, you know, there's people who say, you know, they think outside the box. I'm one of those "what box" people. So I don't like boxes, I don't like thinking in boxes, because that limits your views. If that's a useful, have you ever done things like Myers-Briggs as a commissioner?
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm a JP on the line. If everyone's being J, I'm a P, if everyone's being a P, I'm a J. I can be EI. I am a fairly constant NF, for those who know that sort of stuff. So I can be a balance. I like, probably again, maybe my British training, I like fair play. I want everyone to get their voice out, but I want everyone to get their voice out.
I'm glad you said, I'm glad you didn't say you could be a D or an R.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself, or do you have any questions for us?
If, to the extent that you know it, have you had a chance to sort of feel who your ideal candidate would be, in terms of how they would fit in with what you're looking for? Not that I need to know that, but have you had a chance to sort of name that a bit?
I think we came to the conclusion, we wanted somebody we could all work for, we might have used the word peacemaker.
Work for. Work with.
Work with.
Yeah, no, this is who you work for.
He works for us. But anyway, the looking, you know, I mean, we went through real tumultuous times this last year, and we don't want that to happen again.
I was very struck and touched by the beginning of your retreat day, since I got to sit in for a bit. And that was, that came through very clearly, that you really do want to come together and move forward. And that was partly why I was willing to sort of throw a hat in the ring, because I could see, what I really felt was, your joint commitment to the importance of that. And I think that therefore makes this into a very big turning point for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to say? You've got a couple minutes, you can do so.
I mean, it showed.
Come on, I'm not making...
Hasbro is going really well.
I did want to congratulate you. I think the industry you are in is a very difficult one. I want to compliment you on your seven years here.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm really pleased about it.
I'm pleased to, and it's been a very, it's been a very good, very good move. No regrets at all.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
On your book?
I'm still marking my book. I haven't finished that yet.
I don't know if you, if Carl's here, if you'd want to bring him in at this point or not. You haven't seen him in. Okay.
Take a minute.
Take a minute.
Well, I'm going to be inside. Here.
What time's the next?
All right. Well, I'm going to bring on time.
Hi.
I'm going to, I'm going to, rather than try to pronounce your artist name, would you do that for us?
Coughlan.
Coughlan. Okay, very good.
C-O-U-G-H-L-A-N.
See, I always see this, and I think you're supposed to pronounce McGlocklin's name McGlocklin. So I was doing Glocklin all the time.
I think it was a different Irish county.
Yeah, I see. Okay. Very good. Well, we've got a set of questions that we're going to be going through, and we've got 20 great applicants, we're really pleased with the turnout, we really appreciate it. Commissioner Mom here is going to go ahead with the first question.
Thank you for coming. Tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government, and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Well, I am what they would call a seasoned citizen now. My 65th birthday is coming up, which doesn't really mean anything, except hopefully I've developed a modicum of wisdom over the years. I have been a teacher for the past 20 years, I've been in education. Prior to that, I had my own business for a decade, and prior to that, I was in broadcasting for another 20 years. So I've had a number of careers, all different. My community involvement has been limited, mostly because of family requirements and working, it just didn't leave me a lot of time. As I put down in my application, I was on the boards of two community developments, I guess you would say, they were basically Southern California closed communities that had a board of directors. And I served on the board of one in various capacities, and then I was the president of the other for a couple of years. Other than that, I am ashamed to say that I was involved almost totally in family and working.
Sure, sure. That's great.
When we got up here, however, I saw a city that I had truly fallen in love with, for various reasons, which I hope I get to explain with further questioning. And I did join the Hilltop Tower Association, which I've been to a meeting or two, but nothing further than that.
That's great, thank you.
What do you see as the role of the city commission in decision-making process of the city?
Well, I hope it'd be one of guidance. I come at this from, it's sort of, kind of a dichotomy here, because on one hand, I am a historian, that's what I did, that's what I taught, it's what I truly love. And one of the primary reasons that we moved to this town, at least from my point of view, was the fact that it is a historical gem. And not just in what you would regularly term as history, it is a cultural jewel. And we have some of the finest natural resources that I have seen, especially after coming from Southern California.
Yeah.
But, and so, these cultural and historical treasures, I have this natural desire to preserve and to protect them. And on the other hand, my definitely better half is a small businesswoman who employs five people in Oregon City. And so I am acutely aware of the economic and business climate in this town. And, believe me, I am. And so I realize that we have these natural treasures, which I am sad to say, at this particular point in time, are not being utilized to their fullest extent. But in order to have these, to protect and to preserve them, you need a vibrant economic base. And this is the reason that I am here. And I think that I have answered your question, and I will not go any further with my political viewpoint, until hopefully one of the other two commissioners might ask me, and I'll get to voice my opinion.
That's good, thank you.
I think that's me, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. What is your understanding of the relationship between the commission, city manager, and staff?
Very little, but I'm a quick study. I did read the material that I got, and I understand that at times it is an adversarial relationship. But hopefully they would work together well in a mutual advise and consent capacity. And that's really the best answer I can give you with...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with the current city commission goals, and if so, would you consider any of the goals more important than others?
Here we get to what always gets me into trouble. I am familiar with the city commission goals under the previous city commissioner, which is another reason I'm sitting here tonight. I have some definite... I'm sitting here tonight. Um, I have, uh, some, some definite, uh, problems with the way, um, with the way things were, were handled. Um, if I may go ahead and dig my hole further, uh, I think that the, that the Rivers Project was a debacle. It was a catastrophe. Uh, and if I was appointed to one of these chairs, I would make it a point to attempt to reverse that decision, if possible, uh, outside of, of getting down on hands and knees in front of the Cabela corporate offices. Um, but I, I, I think there are, there are some other issues here. Um, I, I sometimes wonder if the Commission is fully aware that there are two, possibly even three distinct communities that make up Oregon City. Uh, for the past several years, it seems to me that the, uh, that the, that the focus of, of efforts has been the downtown area, which is laudable, and I for one would love to see it gentrified. Uh, but we also have a hilltop community that is really where the growth in this city is taking place. Um, uh, again, I'll put it bluntly. I am a pro-growth individual. Uh, in my, in my situation, I have to be. But I think that that growth has got to be sustainable. It has got to be responsible. And, uh, the last thing that this town wants to do is follow the example of cities that just had, had, you know, willy-nilly growth that was, that, that, that was not done properly, that was not set with long-term goals. Um, I could go on for another probably 45 minutes, but I will hope that I answered your question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, what do you see are the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And how do you, and do you have any suggestions on for how the city should meet or overcome those challenges or goals?
I think the first is obviously, um, economic. I think that we really need to find some way of attracting business and, 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 and jobs into this town. Um, I see some problems with senior issues, mostly due to financial cutbacks. And, uh, and, and at my point in life, those are, those are important issues to me. Um, I, I would like to see some really long-term plan, possibly not even within the next three years, it could be a decade, possibly even more, that would include a comprehensive plan for the entire downtown riverfront area, uh, going all the way from Plaquemine Park up to and including that Blue Heron property. Um, I don't know if anything has been talked about that. I'm sure that it has been. If so, it hasn't been really put out there. But, uh, there is a treasure there. And that is one of the most magnificent sites in Western Oregon. I mean, you can have multiple falls, especially, uh, in, in the summer when it's a trickle. But those falls, with their natural beauty and their history, uh, are just something that really could be a destination point for, for this town. And it could really bring people here. Um, is the council aware that there are actually petroglyphs, Indian petroglyphs?
I think we probably all see them.
Yep.
Okay. And, and nobody knows about them. And what's more, even if they did, nobody can get to see them.
To see them.
And, and this is, this is kind of a tragedy.
Yeah.
Because this is really what Oregon City has always been, going even back into pre-Columbian times. And it should be taken advantage of. And again, I realize that this would be an incredibly expensive proposition, and, and one that would take a combination of probably federal, state, and private funding. But I think if it was done and done right, it could really, really change and revitalize the city, along with the Rivers Project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just a point of information. Eight years ago, we adopted a, a com- uh, a com- uh, excuse me. I want to say comprehensive plan, yes. A comprehensive plan, and, uh, for the city. And at that time, it was realized that the mill industry may, may not continue going. And in that comprehensive plan, we specifically state that that particular area has to go through a master plan process for the city. So, uh, we have at least that much vision. Uh, we got some questions dealing with economic interest. What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? And you've made some comments about it. And what do you think we as a city could do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
As far as the latter, I don't really see what could be done on a city level, honestly. Um, except to, uh, make sure that the simple things like infrastructure, parking, access, that sort of thing are available. Um, what else could be done? Well, obviously, businesses have to be encouraged to come and open up. And not only that, but given an environment in which they can survive. Now, my wife, Kathy Coughlan, owns the UPS store here in town. I'm sure everybody is aware of that.
Yeah.
And she has just made it over the five-year hump. Unfortunately, she's still not making any money yet. And we can put a lot of that on the national economy, and the state economy, of course. But, uh, other than making it easier for businesses to, to, to operate, I really don't see what the city can do as an entity. Um, you know, be as business-friendly as you possibly can. Can I bring up one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
I'm out there, uh, along Central Point Road. And I was reading where there is a, a, a plan for annexation of that area into the city and subsequent development. And, uh, up to and including, uh, I forget the exact number of homes, but it was, it was considerable. And, um, and, and some, um, small business development along there, strip malls and such, service stations. If this goes forward, I would sincerely hope that you take into account the infrastructure along Central Point that this would, that this would affect. Because, uh, we're already feeling the effects where I live, along McCord, uh, of the new building in back of us, and the increase in traffic, and, uh, the increase in traffic speeds. Um, and I don't think that when that development was, was approved, that the, the, uh, the access, in other words, the infrastructure was, was really taken into account. And I would hope in any further developments, not only out there, but anywhere in the city, somebody is made to pony up for improving, uh, and, and making it safer.
Thank you.
Um, how would you address the fact that City Commission sometimes makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals whose opinions differ from your own?
Boy, isn't that democracy in action?
That's right.
We seem to be seeing that from the national level right on down here, aren't we? Uh, I, I, you have to do what you think is right. You have to work with a, a, uh, uh, with, with the, with the idea of compromise. And nobody is going to like everything. Personally, I have a very thick skin. And being a, being a college history teacher, believe me, I've developed one over the years. And so, what anybody thinks of me, I really, really don't care. If I have done what I consider to be the right thing, then I'm happy.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Oh, boy. Um, you know, the, I, I, as a private citizen who comes downtown often, I just really don't understand what, what's being accomplished down there. Um, the whole urban renewal idea down there is a wonderful idea. You know, as I say, Oregon City is very charming downtown. Um, if we could get some sort of a gentrification going, that would be great. Um, I think it has a lot to offer. Again, the problem is, uh, who is going to come and enjoy that gentrification? Um, I don't think that the cost of making downtown is really going to be amortized by the other residents of Oregon City. Uh, it's got to be a part of, of an entire long-term plan, to bring people into the area, and to get them to, you know, experience the rest of, the rest of the area. Um, now, honestly, and at the risk of being very unpopular here, um, I, I don't see that a very good job has been done. Uh, for instance, why did it go to two lanes on Main Street before the bridge is done? You know, it, it just was very confusing. It makes no sense. It was working okay before. Maybe not ideally. But when the bridge is done, then it would be, you know, reasonable and logical to, to go to a two-lane system. Um, another thing I'm having a whole lot of fun with, which I do realize has nothing to do with urban renewal, is the, uh, the State Highway Commission basically closing Oregon City down in March while they finish the construction down there at the 205 and 213. Um, I, I certainly hope that there's some plan in mind to, uh, deal with that situation. Um, if so, Chris hasn't informed me of it. Uh, Chris was where they, he sends me a, an email all the time, emails all the time about what's going on in the city. But, uh, you know, again, urban renewal is what you make it. And so far, I don't really know what it's really attempting to accomplish.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, what are, what are the strengths you would bring to the City Commission?
Well, let's see. I'm opinionated. I'm argumentative. On the other hand, um, I, I think that I'm articulate, and I'm fairly intelligent. Uh, I have a really good educational background, and certainly a lot of life experience, both in business and in the public sector. And, uh, I hope that I could perhaps bring some, some, you know, views that would be useful to the city.
Great. Thank you.
This position requires a significant time commitment, not only for the City Commission meetings, but also the assignments that I make to commissioners. Would you have adequate time to devote this, devote to this, uh, position? And what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the City Commission?
Well, as far as time commitment, I am a retired individual, and right now, my only outside activity is doing an occasional play around town. Uh, I found out, being a history professor, requires a great deal of acting ability, uh, which I'm able to, you know, take out there and share with the students. Um, so that wouldn't be a problem. And as far as long-term goals with the city goes, I guess that would depend on how well my tenure worked. I might be hiding out with curtains drawn. Who knows? Now, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious.
Yeah.
You know, but you see, I'm, I'm just being honest.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, why would you be the best choice for City Commissioner?
What, every time I'd be here, it'd be like a stand-up act? Uh, yeah, I, I, again, it's, uh, it's, it's, I, I think that I've got the experience, the education, um, being, being in the, in the positions that I've held over the years, wide variety of experience. And I think I have at least as good an analytical ability as anybody else. Uh, I am a very quick study. And, uh, it's, uh, I, I seem to have a talent for basically cutting to the chase, getting to the bottom line. And I would hope that, uh, that, that would make me a valuable member.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself, or any questions you'd like to ask us?
Um, actually, I think that I had better not say anything else, and just await your... On the other hand, um, I would like to make a plug for another applicant. Um, I didn't know that Kevin Yell was applying for this position. And, um, I haven't had a chance, I, I know Kevin very well, both, and I respect him immensely, both from a personal and a professional viewpoint. And had I known that he was also applying for this, I might very well have not. But I have not had a chance to talk to him about his, his political philosophy, uh, and, and exactly where he would be, you know, at as far as, as, you know, ideas on growth and that sort of thing. But, um, in the unlikely event, you don't choose me, um, I would like to throw any support that I could to Kevin, because I truly believe that he would be a worthy candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just curious whether you've, have you been involved with the Clackamas Repertory Theater yet?
Uh, no, not at this point in time. Um, I'm aware of them. They are somewhat, their core group is, is, is closed. Uh, it's, it's, it's a fairly difficult group to get into. Um, I have done stuff with Lakewood. I've done numerous shows, uh, both, both film and, and theater up in Portland. Um, in fact, uh, I'm doing, um, City of Angels at Lakewood. And, uh, you know, you may find that, it, it gives me a chance to, to expose my little boy, and my desire to be the center of attention to a lot of people. And so, no, I find it very, very, very relaxing.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Well, we're going to have a half-hour break.
Wow.
All right.
Woo-hoo. I could finish marking up my...
Thanks for your time. And we're, we got a series of questions that we're asking all of the applicants.
Okay.
Betty's going to start us off here.
Hi, Scott. And so, tell us about yourself, some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Okay. Um, let's see. My name's Scott Kalmesger. I've worked with Oregon Department of Transportation for the last 26 and a half years. Um, I've also been a softball umpire for 20 years, doing that in the community. And, uh, I've also served on the Oregon City Transportation Advisory Committee from 2004 till, to present. I took one year off in there as well. And, um, I also attend Oregon City Evangelical Church, and, and evolved there as well.
Great. Thank you.
What do you see as the role of the City Commission in decision-making process for the city?
I see it as a way to make, um, wise decisions in order to, um, set forth Oregon City's future, to be more sustainable, and, uh, also to, um, I got to back up and rethink that question again. Um, also to put together a good budget, so that things can be, um, can be, so we don't go broke in city as well.
Yeah.
And also, I know that you do policymaking, so you have to listen to the issues and make sure you understand everything before you, and come to a, a good agreement before you decide on the policy.
Great. Thank you.
And what is your understanding of the relationship between the Com- And what is your understanding of the relationship between the Commission, city manager, and staff?
Well, I know that the city manager oversees the many different areas, the finance, public safety, public works, community development, community services, HR, library administration, things like that. And it's the job of the City Commission to assist in defining and implementing the city's vision, so I know that. And the City Commission comes up with the policies, and then the city manager then implements them. City Commission rarely goes directly to any of these people. That way, the lines of communication stay correct and David's getting paid to talk to those people.
That's right.
So we should let him do his job.
That's right.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with the current City Commission goals, and if so, would you consider any of the goals more important than others?
Yeah. I like, in looking at the goals, I like the, let me quickly turn to those.
They're up here on the wall, too.
Yeah. I just didn't want to look that way, the cameras would be.
You might have more details in it.
I really do like the goal number one, building a sustainable future, because Oregon City is a fine town, and it's got a great history and a very storied history with everybody coming here from back east. And I'd like to see that, the old-time feel of Oregon City, keep that, but at the same time, have growth, so that we can keep growing for the future. But at the same time, keep that small-town feel, which is really what makes Oregon City really special. Let's see. And always, communication is number five, that's also another very important thing, to always continue to have communication with our citizens and let them know what's going on, everything that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you see, what do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And do you have any suggestions for how the city could move, meet, or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
Well, two to three things. Well, one is the new Walmart that's being proposed, and I'm sure that'll be a big decision of whether it'll be something that'll be good for Oregon City or not for Oregon City. And another one will be, I know they're looking at parking all the time, because parking's very hard to have down on our Main Street. And so that's another big issue that we should probably look at. And lastly, I would say probably maintaining our streets, keeping them going, so that they continue to be maintained with proper, with proper, now, the ceiling on them or inlays or whatever is needed to keep those roads maintained. As a person that works for ODOT, I know that if you let the roads go, making up lost time is bad, because right now, McLaughlin is in need of being completely repaired because it has gone, completely gone, so. So we don't want to get that in Oregon City.
Thank you.
What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? And what do you think that we, as a city, can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Well, I honestly don't know what our, where we are economically at this time. I really don't know that. But I think bringing in new businesses is always good, as long as it's not something that's taking away from the small-time feel of the city. You can get those buildings to look more, more, well, like Leavenworth, where the buildings more look more like what they should be for that town. You know, if you can promote those kind of ideas to make your buildings look more like a small town, rather than big boxes everywhere, you know? That's something that would be nice to see. And also, what was the, can you repeat the other part of that?
Well, the other thing is how to promote the economic development, and also issues in terms of assisting existing businesses, whether you thought there were methods to do that.
Well, something that I've heard from some businesses is that, I know we're putting in the new parking meter, meters on downtown streets. A lot of them will really prefer the coin-operated ones, because that allowed people to come into their businesses and ask for change, and it really promoted the growth of their businesses. So, and that's part of keeping the old-time feel of the town. Yes, those meter things are great, but sometimes having those people go into the businesses and stuff is kind of a better thing for downtown, so, something to think about.
How would you address that, how would you address the fact that sometimes the Commission makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals whose opinions differ from yours?
That happens about every day for me.
For ODOT.
Yes. Working for ODOT and as an umpire, people differ with you a lot. And so I've developed a lot of good listening skills and learning how to do conflict resolution with both coaches, players, and citizens. So that would be something I'm very good at, so.
Thank you.
Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Urban renewal, really don't know too much, but I do know that part of it is to try and promote growth in new businesses in Oregon City, to provide jobs for everybody. And I know there's a commission that works on that, and I believe that, I think, when you're part of this commission, you're also part of that commission as well. So then you're, then I'd be learning how to look at those things. I believe you, which, my understanding is that you look at the plans and you determine whether those are going to meet the transportation needs of the area and make sure that it's really what's needed for the area, not something that's going to all sit, "Why'd you build that?" So, that's about all I know at this time.
Okay. What are the strengths you would bring to the City Commission?
That's one question I actually thought of, and I.
Oh, good.
In all my jobs and at home, I have developed a lot of skills in listening, team-building, brainstorming, and conflict resolution and budgeting, and I feel that would make me the best candidate for the job.
That's great. Thank you.
You know that this position requires a significant time commitment, not only to the City Commission meetings, but for the assignments to committees as well. Do you have adequate time to devote to this position? And what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the City Commission?
Time would not be a problem. I have plenty of vacation time or whatever to be able to get off to spend time working with the Commission. And as far as my umpiring and stuff, I have no problem not accepting a game when that's when we have to meet. So being here as much as possible, as far as it's not a family issue, I'll be here. And as for, as far as future, right now, I'd just like to see what it's like to be a commissioner, see if that would be something I'd like to do in the future. At this time, I really have never done anything like that, so it'd be nice to give that opportunity to see if it's something I'd like to pursue, maybe when I retire in a few years, so.
That's wonderful.
Thanks.
Why do you feel that you would be the best choice for City Commissioner?
Well, it's my desire as an Oregonian and a citizen of Oregon City to work with both Mayor Neely and the rest of the commissioners, and making knowledgeable decisions on the many issues that will shape Oregon City's future. Oregon City has a long and storied history, and I would like to be very, would very much like to be a part of it as a City Commissioner.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or ask us?
I was going to ask what each one of you find is the most, I've got it written down, what do you find the most enjoyable thing being on the Commission?
I can, I'll tell you, I enjoy the interaction with the community. I take a lot of time to be out in the community, visiting with people and asking their opinions and their ideas and goals, and I really enjoy listening to those.
I see.
Yeah, I would say very close to the same. I just, gosh, there's the lot. That's always a question I think about quite often, it's usually. When people ask me, well, when people find out that I'm a City Commissioner, I say, "Well, how do you like that?" And I say, "Well, I don't." But that's not why I'm doing it, you know? It's a lot of work, and it's, I don't, I think when you're in it, you don't necessarily see all the time the benefits of it. But if you look back, I can look back and take, you know, all the things that I've done in the last few years and really, really be excited about it and really be proud of it. Sometimes you lose track of that, and you have to keep, you know, going back and looking at that. But it definitely is great to be in a position where you can listen to people and take it all in. And I guess that one of the bonuses is knowing that there are thousands of people in this town that love Oregon City just as much as you do.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And I think that's really amazing.
I think likewise in many ways, but I think we learn a great deal about interactions with other entities, with the metro regional government, with, we share the ownership of the water treatment plant with Westland, so the kinds of relations we have with other places, we're really, I think, blessed with having the, well, usually blessed with having the county seat here, and also with having the main campus of Clackamas Community College. And those are tremendous assets. And various areas, we've been able to work with those entities, and that's interesting and enjoyable.
What would I say? They've stolen most of my words, but community involvement is a big one. Volunteering my time within our community is very important to me. So just getting that feedback from people, helping to direct the city.
Right.
With the feedback.
And having been on the Transportation Advisory Committee, I know how that is, and it feels good to implement different things like speed humps and things like that, so that we aren't a city of full of speed humps everywhere.
Right.
So it's been fun being on that committee as well.
That's good.
Thank you for asking that question.
That's a good question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wonder if we would have passed.
I don't know. How do you think we did?
You did great.
What kind of a grade would you give us?
You did awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Y'all have notes. Very good. Yes, I'm a note taker, so.
That's great.
Well, Carol, thank you for applying for the position. We've got a set of questions that we're asking all the candidates, and we'll go ahead and elaborate among ourselves.
Okay.
And we'll start with Betty.
Thanks for applying, Carol. Tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Okay. Well, I'm Carol Polly, as most of you already know. My husband and I have lived in Oregon City for 16 wonderful years. I love Oregon City. I loved it the first time. We drove up the 7th Street, and we saw the trees, it was fall, and just thought it was beautiful. And so, very happy to live here. We have two kids. We have a boy and a girl. They are school age, so they're third and fourth grade, so we stay pretty busy with them. And I've always volunteered, since I've been 12-years-old, I've volunteered. And so to me, this is the next step for me. So I feel I can be very effective in this role, and I would love to do it.
Great. Thank you.
Good. What do you see as the role of the City Commission in decision-making process for the city?
Well, the City Commission determines or figures out what needs to be done, the what needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And then they develop policy for that.
Exactly right.
What is your understanding of the relationship between Commission, city manager, and staff?
So the City Commission determines what needs to be done, and the manager determines how it's going to be implemented. And then they, the city manager, manages the staff.
Correct. Good job.
Is it like where you get a tear or you get money or something? I think it's a game show.
You should give her a buzzer.
Yeah. I know our mayor doesn't give money to the city. So funny, because, well, you know, I volunteer a lot, so my latest volunteer venture was Battle of the Books. And one of the, I was the emcee for one, but I also had this horn, you know, when somebody did something wrong, and they had to beat the horn. Yeah, that was kind of fun. I was born to do that.
We're lucky, our police chief is also our sergeant-at-armed, so.
He's not here.
No, he's not.
And I missed you, too, Doug, the day that you came out to Springwater, I wasn't volunteering that day. It was the day before, but.
Okay. Are you familiar with the current City Commission goals, and if so, do you consider any of them more important than others?
I am familiar. I was digging through the website, and I found those. Let me see here. Yeah, I think they're all important, because they work together. For instance, building a sustainable future and increasing communications with citizens to facilitate participation, to me, that goes hand in hand. If citizens are involved, it can sustain the activities and the, you know, positive doings of the city. And the economic development strategy, and then maintaining physical health, that goes hand in hand, too. You've got to have, you know, healthy businesses and a good tax base in order to have long-term financial stability and a good environment for businesses to want to be here and to foster that growth. And then enhance livability of our community, to me, that ties into addressing critical facility needs. It's really important that, you know, we're such a great city that we can be proud of our facilities and have places that people can connect to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, back to me. What do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
That's a really hard question. So one challenge, I think, would be having Oregon City be attractive to businesses, have a positive environment, a nurturing one, one that businesses would seek out. So I see that as a challenge. Another challenge is having, finding a location for the library, I think. Having a central place where people can, you know, identify with, and we can have a community bulletin board and kind of bring the city together. It's a large city, it's a spread-out city. We have all these different neighborhoods. I have friends, it seems like they're across town, but they're just, you know, out in Holcomb or somewhere else in the city. And something, you know, really, you know, to bring everybody together. I want to run into them at our library, not at Westland's library.
That's a good one, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
So for another one.
Or it could be opportunities.
Yeah.
Another one.
Exactly. So, another goal. Boy, there's so many.
Well, we can come back to those if you want to.
Yeah, that brings me up here. We've got a section here on the economy. What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? What do you think we as a city can do to promote economic development and overall the business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Well, I think Oregon City is probably in the same boat as most other cities right now. Everybody's had a cutback and times are definitely tough and I think everybody's feeling the financial stress of that. So, I think that it's important for businesses to feel that Oregon City's gonna support them, not that they're gonna come across a whole bunch of roadblocks. We need to appear, we need to be a little flexible and determine exactly, you know, how that is going to be done. There's gotta be common ground, you have to be able to meet halfway and we're a desirable place to live, I think we should be a desirable place to locate your business as well. Was there another part of that question that I missed?
Not really, well, there was, uh, if there were ways that we could assist the, you know, as a city commission, ways that we could assist the existing businesses.
I think the city has already done a lot of things to assist the existing businesses. The cityscape, uh, you know, increasing the attractiveness of the surroundings, the roads, the sidewalks, the trees, I, I think that definitely has helped. So, I think, I think the city's on the right direction.
That's good to hear from a business owner.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, our, our street was shut down for eighteen months in front of our business and I stayed positive the whole time because I, I did, I really did, I really did, because I had to work with other business owners that weren't, because I was on that Celebrates Seventh Street Committee two years. And I saw that and I knew that it was gonna, you know, be who of us in the future and I saw the grand vision. And so, I think being able to see the big picture is really important and being able to communicate that with other people too.
That's great.
That's good.
Thank you.
Um, how would you address the fact that the city commission sometimes makes unpopular decisions and how would you relate, or how would you relate to individuals who differ from you in opinion?
Well, you can't be popular all the time, darn it.
That's true, that's true.
And I, I think when people have differing opinions, you just have to listen, you just have to take a deep breath and listen and you can really learn something from different vantage points. And if you take a little morsel away from everybody that you talk to and every negative opinion, um, I think it can add up to a big benefit. At least they're talking, so that's good.
I just got a letter from somebody that was complaining, I'll, I'll let you answer it.
You're gonna put my communications degree to the test, aren't you, Doug?
Yes, we are. That was the question, we'll get the answer.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Well, I see urban renewal as a tool, so I think it, it has a purpose. Like any tools, it can be used for the good or maybe not so good, you know, there's definitely gray areas in there. I think in tough economic times, it can be a tool to get things done that the city feels needs to be done. Then there's the whole tax increment thing too, so there's some projects where you're really gonna be able to get that money back in the long run, so that's another consideration to take into account.
Okay, thanks.
Um, what are the strengths you will bring to the city commission?
Um, my base of experience in volunteering and my base of experience in business, um, my communication skills working with small groups, my listening skills. I, I like to listen, um, assess the situation, do my homework and state my opinion and then try to come up with common ground. So, I think it's really important how groups work together and facilitate that.
Great, thank you.
As you know, the position requires a significant time commitment, not only to these commission meetings, but for assigned committees as well. Do you have any, do you have enough adequate time to devote to this position and what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the city commission?
Um, I do have enough time. My husband is a hundred percent on board and so are my kids.
That's important.
Yes. Um, and like I said, I, I feel this is where I will be most effective as a volunteer, so I will put all my volunteer efforts towards this. And as far as the long term, I mean, I feel that all my involvement with the city's been, you know, leading up to this, so I definitely like to, you know, stay involved and at some point in time.
Well, sometime, point in time could be November, but.
And you've already spoken to this a little bit, but why would you, why do you feel that you are the best candidate for city commissioner?
Well, I think I might bring a little bit of a different viewpoint, you know, being a business person and having school-aged children. I run into people of all different, you know, types and backgrounds, um, so I see myself kind of as a sponge, you know, soaking up their input. I just sit and listen to people and see what I can learn. I'm a hard worker, I would work really hard, do my research, um, I'm a studier, so, and I'm a compromiser too, so I'm always looking for that common ground and the big picture and what's really important. And I like to try to, um, take a complicated situation and be able to articulate it to anybody, so, in layman's terms, so people can understand. I think that's important, I think that a lot of people, I met with a friend for lunch on Friday and she just commented that she hears, you know, on the news or something and she feels almost insulted because they don't really explain what they're talking about or they assume that you already know. So, I think it's important to be able to talk to people so that they can understand it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or any questions you'd like to ask us?
I think we've covered just about everything. Thank you so much for doing this and taking the time and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
We're really happy with the number of applicants we have and also the quality of applicants that we have. We have a set of, of questions that we're asking everybody and, uh, we'll really appreciate your applying and, uh, Betty will lead off with the first question.
Yes, um, tell us about yourself, some of your community activity, your experience with local government and community service and why you wish to serve.
Well, I'm Norm Stewart, of course, and I've been in Oregon City, we've been residents of the city for forty-four years. I moved here in sixty-eight, I believe it was, from Mount Angel and that's really where I started my service in politics and government. While there, I served as a, um, under a different form of structure. We had the city council, the commissioners and a mayor and we didn't have a, um, business manager as such. It was our responsibilities where, in my case, I had public health and safety, which was the fire and police department, streets and sewers and, and parks and recreation. In those three areas, they were under my supervision, so it was somewhat different and, um, I think we had six, seven, seven commissioners plus the mayor and the mayor wasn't voting except in ties. So, anyway, um, when that came to a, a completion, we had a situation where we had the last marshal in Oregon serving in the police department. And, uh, with the college growing and all, it was evident we were gonna have to do something different, so we amended the constitution, uh, charter and brought in the chief, set up a department and, um, and we'd had a recorder, the city recorder was actually the municipal judge, we had recorder's court. And, uh, it was really a laid-back little community, they'd come in on some pretty serious charges and they'd get a wink and, "Well, you're not gonna do it again, are you?" And, uh, they'd head down the street and that would be the end of it. But, um, the police department that came in wouldn't work under those conditions, so we had to do something with the court. So, we amended again the constitution to come up with the, um, municipal court and I stepped down from the council and they appointed me, the first appointment was by the commission and then I was elected on my own after that for a full four and a half years. When I moved up here, I resigned from the judgeship and, uh, came into Oregon City and I didn't realize, they told me when I came in, "If you're gonna do anything in Oregon City, you better join the Elks first."
Well, there you go, priorities. You have to prioritize.
You've got that, you're right. But anyway, I've always been a slow learner in many respects and I didn't join the Elks, so I... And, uh, I had, I had several failing attempts to run for office, I think I ran for, I didn't have, never run for the council except this last November, a year ago, but I did run for the sheriff's office at one point and I really braved it and came out in seventy-four against, not Ralph, but Dick Groner and he was the pillar of the, of the Groner community in politics and he was a senator. And, uh, as an independent, I did respectfully well, but, um, in fact, the Republicans pulled their candidate out and they threw their weight behind me in the election, but after that, I realized that I better get my act together, I was gonna do much in the community as far as serving. So, uh, beyond that, I've served in any number of different committees, I've been in land use study programs and, uh, I've also worked with the Clackamas County Traffic Safety Commission for, I believe, four years. I've served five years in corrections as a teacher at McLaren, that's what basically I am, I'm an educator, a diversified educator. Fifty-four years I've been in education and I've had a lot of opportunities along the way. I've been a contract builder and, uh, I've also been in the trucking industry, I built the IITR Truck Driving School and I had at one time twenty-two tractors and thirty-some trailers in my company while I was at Portland State, being a professor at the Continuing Education Department. So, I've had a lot of opportunity in different dimensions. The one thing I noticed about Oregon City, oh wait, I don't wanna go there just yet.
Okay.
Abort.
Well, maybe one of our other questions will get you there.
Yep.
What do you see as the role of the city commission in the decision-making process of the city?
Okay, um, well, in Oregon City, I was impressed these past years when I came to Oregon City, there seemed to exist in the community a high spirit of enthusiasm and pride and a pioneer spirit and I think that through the years that has prevailed despite the hardship that the community has suffered through. We've lost a mill, we've lost the lumber industry, um, one thing right after another has been a challenge and, uh, as we, and today still, we survive and I, I still see that spirit. It's been diminished somewhat because of the challenges, but I think that as a commissioner, it's our responsibility to serve as the facilitator in the community, um, not a regulator, but as a facilitator to help men and women of, uh, the visionaries and their, um, dreams as they see them and, and the energy to make them happen, that we owe them the obligation of supporting them and, and working with them in the, in the restructuring of our community during these hard economic times. There are some real challenges out there before the governments of the communities and the backbone of our American government is right here in the municipalities. This is where it all starts and if we don't have good government at this level, we can't expect to have good government at any other level. So, I guess I would see myself as a facilitator for the promotion of opportunities in our community and there are a host of opportunities out there. There are a lot of major companies, if we could figure out where we wanna put the industrial area, that would really like Oregon City. We've got rail, we've got highway, we've got, uh, not too far from the major airports and, and we've got a good spirit out here, so I think we could entice, uh, different companies to come in. Uh, not too long ago, I had an exchange with the, uh, General Motors Company when we were having battery trouble with their electric cars and they had learned to have a plant somewhere that did nothing but research and development of the dry cell batteries for automotive use and we don't have anything. We could go to hydrogen or atomic powers, but they're, at this point, they're a little dangerous to play with yet. At some point, they probably will be a reality, but that's just one of, hundreds of companies out there wanting to develop that we could bring in and with them, keep it in balance, you're not just going with industry, you'll also be going with necessary housing, schools and other facilities to support this and invite these people in to be a part of this. But I think it's our role as councilmen to support these missions and the people that have the ability and not try to regulate them and I don't think we should be using a government as such, should probably not be using public funds for venture capital. But, um, I think they'll sit down, arbitrate through these things and working together collectively, we can find good solutions and good answers for the years ahead.
Um, what is your understanding of the relationship between how the commission, city manager and staff work?
Well, actually, you're hiring the city manager to be your executive CEO and he's the man that's supposed to be right on top of it, which David does, and he knows what the different departments are, he knows what their needs are and he finds out when there's difficulty, how he can best remedy that and then he's the liaison back to the commission to keep us informed properly and truthfully as to what's going on openly so that we can all work together to find, uh, negotiable solutions to the need.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with the Oregon City, um, current commission goals and if so, do you consider any, one of them more important than others?
No, I'm not, in all honesty, you know, I, I'm not on the street, I hear the scuttlebutt, I'm going to the CIC, I have a representative on the CIC when I'm not there, but in all honesty, I would have to admit that I, I would wanna sit down and spend some time getting oriented and, and also instructed as to what, what, what should be my position to the goals of the city, which I've seen from the commission.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna be, I wanna be a, um, I kinda like to look at this as an interim commissionership where I'm coming in to fill the last ten months of a, of a given position and during that time, we'll find out if I can do the job or can't do the job and I'm not gonna make any decisions, it's about November, I'm not coming and saying, "Well, come November, I'll be ready for reelection," 'cause I don't even know for sure that I wanna be reelected. And one nice thing about being commissioner number one, when people come to me and say, "Hey, Stewart, you've only been on a couple of months, how did you get to be commissioner number one?" I'll say, "It's real simple, they assign you by age."
There you go.
So, what do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years and do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
One, the first one I would see as a major issue is apathy in our community from the citizens. I just worked up a partnership with the Political Science Department of Clackamas Community College and they've assigned a student, Polly Si Toomey, uh, for South End Neighborhood and what we wanna do is build a questionnaire, uh, an instrument, a tool if you please, and we wanna go out and pass it around in the neighborhood and talk to the people, find out what they see the city doing or not doing and what they would like to see done. I know they're gonna come at it madly with trees and sidewalks, but beyond that, they must have other interests out there on South End, with the trees and sidewalk. But, anyway, uh, and, and we wanna, we wanna get our people active in, in the different associations, you know, cons- But anyway, and we want to get our people active in the different associations, in a constructive way. I'm not really much in favor of these conflicts of personality and of goals and special interests and so forth. I think that somehow we've got to overcome those things and work together as one solid team throughout the whole population. I came through the years, I was raised in a working household. Until I left home, I truthfully believe that mother, father, God and FDR were the three trinities. Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I got through my page. What is your view of the overall health of Oregon City? And what do you think we as a city can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including the assistance of existing businesses? You kind of alluded that in your introduction.
Well, I think very seriously, we've got to get this settled down as to what part of town is going to be industrial or we perhaps like Beaverton really don't have to worry a lot about the industrial. But I don't believe that. I think that we've got areas south between, off the south end beyond in that direction and Kanema on out in that basin out there, a pretty natural site. They've got electricity, they've got water sewer, water railhead can come in there. And it'd be a very inviting spot for a new industrial site to spring up. And keep it out away from the residential part of town and use the residential part to fill in. And we've got a lot of empty property in the city that could accommodate some nice buildings. And then we could open up other areas for population as it's coming in or could be enticed to come in if we had proper facilities here. The other thing that comes to mind that we should be looking forward to is the development of our heritage properly. I get beat down on this all the time. I shouldn't say this because it'll get me in trouble. But my wife is related to George Abernathy. And it just stops me dead in my tracks. I've heard, I've been drilled this so long, thirty years. And I got this really in sophomore in high school and studying US history. Our teacher was really mad about the proper pronunciation of names. And there is an Abernathy, but the second vowel is an A. In Abernathy, the second vowel is an E. And when I hear Abernathy Road and Abernathy Bridge and Abernathy this and they're all spelled with an E, excuse me Dan, I'm sorry, apologies. I go, I just get fanatically upset. But I think we ought to stay with our culture, the history of what's here. Because we've got a beautiful history and culture. And we need to develop that, we need to enhance it and protect it and have things here that really preserve the heritage of our city.
How would you address the fact that sometimes the city commission makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals with different opinions than your own?
I'm sorry, Rocky, could you ground, repeat that?
Yeah. So sometimes the city commission makes unpopular decisions. And how would you work with individuals or relate to individuals whose opinion differs from your own?
We are going to have differences in opinion regardless of what you decide. And I think that's healthy. But I think that you have to take any, through our media and ability to work with the people, that's a test of our skill and our ability to work with the community. If we can pull these people together and sit down and talk through it and look at the difference. Our decision may not be the best and their decision, opposition may not be the best. But somewhere in between the two poles, there's good firm ground for agreement. And I think we have to arbitrate those, search them out and facilitate those goals.
Thank you.
Okay, Norm, here's the question. Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Okay, well, I think that it's a very, I think it needs, I think it needs overhauling actually, Kathy. It was written decades ago and we were in an entirely different economy than we are today. And you know, there's a balance between private economy and the public economy. And in reference to wage employees. Now, we have in Oregon City perhaps with the schools and fire services and everything else, I would venture to say, I have no statistics to back this, but I would say the economic wealth in wages in our community is about a sixty percent public and a forty percent private. And the private are the ones that are paying the heavy bulk of the tax. And I think that somewhere in between, we have to have a balance between public employee and private employee to balance the economy in that dimension. It's just one area. There are many areas. But it wouldn't hurt to consider in today's economy, how much we can strip off of the public services to facilitate urban renewal and your schools, fire, police, et cetera. The town of Monal just to our south has laid off two of its police officers completely. They have two other officers that are splitting up one shift. They work between them, one shift, one shift designated, but two men working it on different hours. And they had some money problems down there and it was facilitated, not necessarily from urban renewal, but they don't have anywhere to back up to now because there are no funds to facilitate and supplement the budget of the police department. So we have to be very sensitive in these times, particularly to the finances. And again, I don't see us using, I've been in business, I've been broke a couple of times and believe me, there is, the well does go dry after a fashion. You can carry it for just so long on credit and reserves and then you have to face the reality, the well has dried up. And we're not too far from that. I think we have to be very cautious as to how we spend public funds. And I'd rather use it to facilitate people and have this great ability to vision things and then the imagination to make them happen. And not offer to take it over and finance it for them, but serve as a facilitator so they can do their thing, which they are good at. And work it out that way rather than trying to go into venture capital into the private sector.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what are the strengths you would bring to the city commission?
Fewer meetings.
Good luck with that.
Dream on Stuart. No, I really, I think we've got a good commission. I think it's done remarkably well and there's a golden opportunity for the commission to excel and do even greater things. But what I could personally bring is just to probably keep my mouth shut and watch and listen for a little bit until I see what's going on. And then really put my back to the plow and put in a double week's work in a one week period.
Okay, great, thank you.
As you know, the commission requires quite a bit of time, not only for these commission meetings, but also for committee assignments that are made. Do you have adequate time to devote to this position? And what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the city commission?
Well, it's a good time for me actually, Marineli, because I've closed down my school and I'm looking for something else to do. I'd like to do some research work, particularly in the fields of, field of adult education. We're told by our federal government that forty percent of the adult population are without high school diplomas. And that our literacy level on the workforce is barely half that of the whole world population. So we're competing with third world countries around the world. And the American population of the workforce should be at a very high standing. We're not. We're right at about fifty percent standing literacy level of workforces around, including third world people. So this is a concern to me. And I do intend to keep myself busy in an advocacy and doing research work and possibly a little writing in that area. But I do have the time. And a question that should probably be addressed, as you know, I did have heart surgery eight months ago. And you might say, well, you know, so you've got the time, but are you physically able to do it or use it? And the answer would be yes, 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 to all of the above. My doctors are totally amazed at my comeback. I'm eight months out of surgery. And other than an injury in athletic, related to athletic activities in high school in my right leg where they took the veins for the bypasses out, that leg is a little bit slow in coming back coordinated, in coordination. But other than that, I've been putting in sixty, seventy hours a week in my own businesses. And the only two businesses I'm going to keep alive and work in relationship to would be the Western States College of Commerce for Research and Development. And then the National Investigators Association where I do conduct private investigations from time to time. So yes, I think I could meet the hours.
And why do you feel you'd be the best choice for us, for city commissioner?
Well, I think I would be, but I haven't met the other candidates. I'm sure there's some excellent candidates out there and I would entrust you and put my trust in you to use your judgments in selecting the person that you think can best fit the seat here.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or any questions you'd like to ask of us?
What's the pay?
It's tremendous, it's just tremendous.
It's really good. Occasional sandwich and a soda.
Yes. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time and giving me this consideration. It's, you know, I'm not ready to quit, not yet. And unfortunately, while we say we're, you know, that we have these fair practice employment laws and everything else, when they see my birth date on a resume, they say, oh, and who else do we have? But anyway, the only way, we can't document any credentials that make, we'd want, entice anybody to want to hire us. So we've got to prove it, you know, we've got to get out there and do a show and do the act and go through it. And I'm selling newspapers on the corners in Eureka, California when I was eight years old. And I've been on the run ever since, I've never slowed down.
There you go.
Scared to death. The monies I, my wife and I get for retirement is good, but it's not adequate to keep us a lifestyle and so forth that we'd like to be. So I have to go out and do extra things too.
And that is not why you're running for the commission.
Let me clarify, it's a full pay.
Those are excellent points. Because you see, I think, what I was alluding to is you just can't do everything for money. I'm an elder in my church and past president of the congregation. And I have parishioners that I'm responsible for, shut-ins and so forth that I have to visit during the week and minister to and so forth. And I think that you have to keep your life in balance too. You can't just be driven down one track. You have to have a balance between public service and your spiritual life and your public life and your working life and so forth. So anyway, it's not all about money.
That's right, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norm, before you leave, when you made your introduction, then you stopped short saying, well, I'll leave that to later. Whatever it was you wanted to leave to later, did you get it out?
Very observant. I think in the process of the discussion, though, we have covered all of the points.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're a half an hour ahead of schedule. Applying for the position, we've got ten candidates who are very, very pleased with the quality of the candidates. We got a set of questions that we'll be asking you. We're asking all the, all the candidates the same questions. And we're going ahead and beginning, but we're going to hold off for a minute for Rocky to come in.
It's the first time I've been in the city commission office this far.
Well, welcome.
In fact, I had a doctor here for my last two children. Most wonderful doctor in the world, Dr. Smith.
Oh, Dr. Smith, yeah.
Doctor, doctor, doctor.
If you want to talk about you.
That was what I was going to say.
Does anybody need another resume?
No, I think we're good.
Unless you've rewritten it, in which case we can give it out.
No, I have not rewritten it, only the Oregonian rewrote it. Shocking.
Well, Mary, as I said, we're going to all ask the family questions we've been asking everybody else. And Betty will be starting here.
That sounds fair.
Okay, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service and why you wish to serve.
And what?
And why you wish to serve.
I can answer that one first because it's a short term.
I did notice that they did your application, you were not planning to. But we'll come to that question later.
What?
Never mind, we'll come to that question later.
Well, I'll have to look and see what I've done in my life. You have copies of that resume that starts with my birth, right?
Yes. Yes.
Well, here, well, actually, I did a lot of stuff in Wilsonville, but you probably don't care about that. That was big time. I was named Wilsonville Citizen of the Year in nineteen seventy-two for starting the city's very first newspaper. And during that time, I interviewed and talked with Tom McCall, Norma Paulus, just about everybody that was running for office. And I did the whole newspaper myself for a couple of years. And I got some help as it got bigger. As county press chairman for a couple of candidates. Let's see. And in, oh, then I got involved with Westland Wilsonville School District. I did some classroom stuff. And I was on their budget committee for, I'm guessing, I know it was at least four years. And then I went to work for the district as Public Information Secretary, I think it was called. And then I became District Secretary. And developed that little book. I should have brought some of those little books, you could take them home. They were very good. We had a guy from Harvard that did an article and just all around. And I edited it and I designed the cover and the insides. I did it from start to finish for, I think we had one or two each year for about four years. And let's see. In breakfast, when I moved over here, was a huge success. I had called, when I looked at the house, which is directly across the street from the golfing house, it needed a lot of things done to it. It was bad. And I called Dan Fowler, talked to his partner. And I said, do you know what house I'm talking about? And he said, yes, we looked at that. I said, well, why didn't you buy it? His exact words were, too much work.
Too much work.
So I worked at it and had a lot of help. And I sold it for one and a half times what I paid for it.
Wonderful.
Which is, has nothing to do with why I'm here. I just want to serve the city a little bit more, but not a lot.
Okay.
And let's see, yes, I was the first person to contact Fort Vancouver Superintendent. Can't think of her name right now. Wonderful, wonderful girl, six feet tall and beautiful. She was forty-four years old and had never been married. And she got married to one of the park service people from Seattle. And she's, I think she's still on the job. But she's had two children and adopted one. And she's probably forty-eight by now, so she was in her forties when all that happened. Wonderful, wonderful person. I hope we're still working with them, but I think so. There was only one person that really hated the force. I'm not sure why, and she's not here anymore.
So that worked out good.
That's what we have to, we have to get rid of the people that don't go along with things.
There you go. There you go. All right. Thank you.
That might be a lot of people.
That might be a lot of people. That might be one or two of us.
Mary, what do you see as the role of the City Commission in this, in the decision-making process of the city?
It's the United States Congress for Oregon City.
Well, God, I hope not.
Has the power. I mean, it should. Should. Should also be thoughtful about the citizens and listen. And I think you guys do a great job.
Well, that's what I was saying. We do a better job than the US Congress does. But anyway.
But we're biased, too.
But we're biased. No, Rocky's biased.
On that particular, okay, where are we at now?
Well, I think I served on the Budget Committee under three mayors because I think, uh, Dan Fowler had a vacancy when I moved over here. So, I was appointed to one year there and then continued into, um, John Williams' term. And I must have been reappointed because I know I was with, uh, um, who's her ex-mayor?
Alice.
Alice for a year or two. So, uh, yeah. What, what the local paper said that I had budget experience is indeed true because I was chairman of the Westland School District Budget Committee, and I was on that from, I think, I don't know, I was on it for a full term and started another one, and then I got hired by the district. And that was, you know, makes money. So...
Yeah.
I went for that.
Got to go for that one.
Uh, Mary, what is your understanding of the relationship between how the Commission, City Manager, and staff work together?
The Commission and staff and who?
And the City Manager.
The what?
Our City Manager.
Oh, him.
That guy.
Oh, him.
I'm sure he just does what he's supposed to do.
(laughing)
Kind of keeps a low profile. This is probably wise.
Are you familiar with the current City Commission goals? And if so, do you think any of them are more important than others?
What was that last part?
Do you think any of the current City Commission goals are any more important than others?
I don't know the goals. Where do I get them?
Just up here on the wall.
Oh. Well, one is important. Two is certainly important. Oh, my goodness. Well, number four, those first three things ought to help that. And I think it's a darn livable community. I have a little problem with, uh, street maintenance and, and speeding down on High Street. My God. People going to work, I swear, they leave their house when they're supposed to be at work, if not later. And it goes on from about seven to nine. And then from about four-thirty to six, they turn around and go the other way and forty, fifty. It's a twenty-five mile zone. I mean, really. And, uh, the city did put up some whole bunch of signs and stuff about three or four years ago, and that worked. But then they took them down and probably put them somewhere else. I don't know. Maybe they threw them away. I don't know. But they worked. They really worked. Because I've been, I've been down on High Street, I don't even know how long. I guess six or eight years after I left this place over here. And, uh, cats and, cats and dogs both have been killed. And I saw one, like, two-year-old that strayed into the street, and I just about fainted. Stuff like that, you know? And I don't know the answer, but it is a concern.
Okay. So, um, what are, what do you see as three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And do you have any suggestions for how the city should meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
Number one right now is the horrible division I see. And I, maybe you don't want me to talk about it, and I don't have much to say about it, except that's just got to change. And I, I'm sure there's a way. I'm sure there's a way. And I'll think about that for the next six, eight, ten, twelve months. And maybe come up with something. I've come up with a lot of things in my life.
That's great.
What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? And what do you think we, as a city, can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Hmm. I knew that. I'd probably be sitting in your place, Doug.
There you go.
Um, I don't know. Maybe there should be a series of get-along meetings or something. I could develop a, a list that every, nearly everyone agrees on. I don't know. It's just going to take work. It's going to take work. More work than's been done. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know.
Sure.
But you can always hire another committee.
We're not going to hire them.
Volunteer only.
That's right.
Um, how would you address the fact that occasionally the City Commission makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals whose opinion differs from your own?
I try to find common ground. That is absolutely first. And I've been very successful at it, too. I can think of some people here that I didn't like at all when I first came to town. And we're buddies now. They stop on the street when they see me walking because I don't have a car anymore, and I don't want one. I do have one, and I have a license, but I don't drive it, um, because of my left, my right eye, not because I got too many tickets or anything. However, I have gotten the only two parking tickets I ever got in Oregon City. And one time, I was on jury duty, and I was parked down there by the elevator. And I thought, if there's one thing they should let me get by with, is being on jury duty. I couldn't, couldn't get out of there in the right times, time span. And, uh, what was the question? Oh, how to, how to solve differences?
Yeah. I think you answered it.
Work. Just plain work of all kinds. I try to find common ground. That maybe has been done. I don't know. Maybe it's been done over and over. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City. Urban renewal? Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
I didn't think we had any in Oregon City yet.
Urban renewal?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we have an urban renewal district.
The what?
We do have an urban renewal district, yes.
Where is it?
It encompasses Seventh Street and downtown and up to the north end.
I did not know that. And when I talked to urban renewal people, um, he said there were two.
Not anymore. One was closed.
The Hilltop was closed.
Yeah. Um, Clagmas Town Center?
Uh, that's county.
That's not ours.
That's not ours.
Okay. I don't know. I didn't know Oregon City had any urban renewal. I've never read anything about it, never heard it discussed. You guys must have done it in secret.
It would have been easier if we did, but...
Don't say that.
So, um, Mary, what are the strengths you will bring to the Commission?
Well, you know, this is corny, but fairness and trying to get along with everybody. And, uh, and I have a brain, and I have ideas. And you already gave me some things to think about just now.
That's good.
Stuff like that.
Great. Thank you.
I'm always on time or early.
Very early.
I think, I think you know this, but, uh, the Commission requires a significant amount of time, not only for our meetings, but for assignments to committees as well.
Uh-huh.
Do you have the adequate time to devote to this position? And what are your long-term goal, what is your long-term goal for the future involvement of the, on the City Commission?
My future involvement?
Yeah.
I'm going to retire at the end of this term. I retired thirty-nine years already. I'll go home and I'll propagate native honeysuckle, which I'm going to sell little pieces of for two dollars apiece. And, uh, and it is native honeysuckle because I brought a plant over here with me from our farm at Wilsonville. It was growing eight hundred feet back from the house, adjacent to the city limits, and it just kind of stayed there on this fence post. So, I thought, I'm going to bring this over to Oregon City. They probably don't have any native honeysuckle. And I put it behind the, the second house over here on Center Street, which is right next to that tall fence, um, by Seven-Eleven. I think it's six or seven feet tall. And it got no sun. And it grew and grew and grew, and it never once bloomed. Well, now I have it along a fence, a short fence. It has grown to sixty feet in length, and it blooms like crazy because it gets just the right amount of sun.
That's great.
About maybe four hours a day, something like that. Um, and I consider that a big success.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, I just, just comment, you've already indicated, I think, and you have it in your, in your, uh, in your application, you're, you're not interested in running for the City Commission in November.
That's correct.
Okay.
Definitely not, underlined.
Yes, you did.
Did I underline it? Oh, shame on me. I'm sure you'll have plenty of candidates.
Um, why do you think, what, what makes you stand out as a best choice for us as City Commissioner for this remaining term?
I think I get along well with people, probably more so now than when I was a kid. Um, you know, there's something good in everybody. Sometimes I have to keep telling myself that, but it's true. And if you can reach that, you can probably make some headway. Um, is that the kind of thing you were asking about?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay.
I have lots of good friends here in Oregon City. I already saw a couple of them leaving or whatever.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or questions you'd like to ask of us?
What time do your council meetings start?
Seven P.M.?
Seven P.M. And what time are they usually over?
Ooh, there's a wide variety there.
Usually, usually we're out of here by ten or ten-thirty, and that's usually late for us.
And you meet twice a month?
It's not, it's not, it's not like during the times that Mayor Fowler served.
Usually the meetings end the same day they start. Excuse me. Usually the meetings end the same day that they start.
But...
I think that's been true, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
But to be...
They were, they were so sparrow-lipped.
But to be, um, sometimes urban renewal will start at five. So, we'll do urban renewal first, and then we'll go to the City Commission at seven.
So, you do that on the same day, usually.
Sometimes that works that way.
Usually.
But there's no set schedule for urban renewal?
Well, it's usually on the, on the first, first or third Wednesdays. It doesn't meet as regularly as we do.
Okay. So, you have twice as many meetings as you used to have. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, then we have, then we have study sessions as well.
Then we have a study, it works out.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay.
So, you get to know staff in the city hall pretty well?
I sure don't know it yet. Is that fireplace still in the back corner?
No.
When this was the doctor's office.
This was a doctor's office.
Beautiful fireplace, and that was the waiting room.
Yep, and it's gone.
And I think sometimes people just came in to enjoy the fireplace and leave.
Yep.
We have to put it in the future budget.
City Manager will get in his operation budget.
I can't believe they took it out or whatever. Maybe they took it out before the city bought the place.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, it was, this place has got it already.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mary. I think that's all we had.
Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just so everybody in the room...
Happy to have ten applicants. Um, we've got a set of questions we're asking everybody. And, uh, we're going to go ahead and start with Betty.
Okay. So, Tim, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
How much time do we have?
Quite a bit.
Good. Guys, so I mean, we're ahead of time. Uh, well, again, my name's Tim Powell, and, uh, I'm a resident, uh, I'd have to have my wife here to be sure, but I'm about twenty years, I think, in Oregon City. Um, I am married. My wife, Delph, is a teacher in the Oregon School, City, uh, Oregon City School District. I have two daughters, both in college, um, one in Canada getting her master's and one at Oregon State, uh, getting her nursing degree. So...
Oh, very nice.
Both good things. And it costs a lot of money, I have found.
Yes.
As we go forward.
So, you're applying for this position for the pay?
For the money.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see the money anywhere, by the way.
It's the same pay as what you had before.
Ah, good. Great.
Twice the money.
I thought that was going to change. Um, I have been involved in many aspects of the city. I've been, uh, I've been a City Commissioner for four years. Um, I have been on the Planning Commission for, uh, eight or ten years. Um, the last four or five, I was the chair. Um, I've been the neighborhood chair of McLaughlin Neighborhood or co-chair for probably the last twelve of the twenty years I've been here in one time or another. Um, I've been involved in, of course, you know, South Fork Water Board, most of the things that were involved with the City Commission, um, a lot of different committees and, and things like that. Um, let's see. There's a list, um, that I sent you with my resume in case I missed a few, but I also, the one thing I did forget to put on there, which I'm probably most proud of, is I'm also a lunch buddy.
Oh, yeah. That is important.
Yes, at one of the schools here locally. So, thoroughly enjoy that.
Yes. So, I guess you could say, um, why do you wish to serve?
Well, I think I have, um, I have some experience, and I think it would be beneficial. I think I've, um, been involved in, uh, the, the land use aspects of the city for a long time. I've helped write the comprehensive plan, so I think I have a good understanding of the needs and the goals of the city, uh, from a land use perspective. Um, I think I have a good handle, a pretty good handle. I'm not sure you always have one on the citizens and, and what they want. But being part of the Neighborhood Association as long as I have, I feel I am pretty comfortable, uh, with, with the needs of the city and with the potential for growth and the things that are happening here.
Great. Thank you.
Tim, what do you see as the role of the City Commission in decision-making process of the city?
Well, clearly, the, it's the policymaking body of the city. I mean, that's clearly the, the obvious, the number one thing. But I think the, the things that you don't see as much, I think it's leadership, and I think that's really the most important. The, the priorities of developing our goals for the community, being out in the community, touching base with people, talking to them, getting to understand the needs, um, not of a specific few, but of, of the all. And it's hard to do that. Um, so, uh, you know, I think that's probably the, the biggest thing is, is really, is trying to develop a good plan for the growth of the city for as long as you're sitting up here.
Great.
Thank you.
And this one should be easy. What's your understanding of the Commission and its, how the relationship between the Commission, City Manager, and staff?
Well, it's a unique, uh, not a unique. I mean, there's lots of different City Commission structures where the City Commission is the policy body and the City Commit, and the manager is the, is the, uh, carries out the day-to-day activities and the duties of the city. Um, I, I am a firm believer in not, um, uh, of going through the City Manager before I go through Staff. I think it's respectful, and I think it's important that you do that. Um, I think, I think the City Manager is the key, uh, person that has to be, that the City Commission has to deal with. Um, you know, I believe if the City Manager's not doing his job, then it's up to the City Commission to, you know, sit with the manager and make sure that we all are on the same page, moving forward, developing plans, making sure we're getting the right information, make sure we have a good staff that's been hired to support us, which I believe we do.
Great.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the current City Commission goals? And if so, do you consider any of them more... more important than others?
Well, unless they've changed since the goal-setting session, I mean, I was, I've, ah, then they haven't. So, yeah, I think the probably most important would probably be at this time in our, the crisis we're facing, is I believe an economic base has to be developed and continued to be developed. I mean, we're doing, we're starting to build that process. The second thing I think we have to do is, we have to build an infrastructure to support that kind of growth. And I think growth is inevitable. You know, we're foolish if we don't believe it. It's going to happen. We have the most buildable land in the metro area, and I believe that if we're not being ahead of the curve, we're going to fall seriously behind, and we're going to get into situations like South End, where we don't have easy access off the top of the hill. So, you know, being proactive is critical. So those are the most, I think, the most, two are the most important. Third, I would say, is probably citizen involvement. I think education of the citizens is critical. I think we should invest in citizen involvement by way of a staff liaison. I know we have to some degree, but I think we need to enhance that. I think a full-time person supporting, I think, would be nothing but good and beneficial for this community and for the citizens there. And then, in order of importance, I think investing in history. You know, we talk about it, we all, we're all out banging the drums, saying we're the historical, you know, capital and things like that, but, you know, we aren't putting any money back into it, and I think that's embarrassing. And I think we need to look for better ways to do it, and look for more money, work with the county, work with the state, and come up with ways to really make our heritage proud.
So we asked you for the three most important issues.
There it is.
I always add an extra, my mom always said, do one more better, so.
So we're at...
Yeah, he killed, he got both of those right. Killed two of them. We're done right there.
Okay. What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City, and what do you think as a city you should do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Well, I think overall, I think the city is relatively healthy. I think we have, I think we have gone from being a, and I apologize for using the term of a backwater town, and I think we have actually started to put ourselves up the ladder. I think people are recognizing us for what we are, as an innovative community. We're not afraid to step up and do some creative things, and I thank staff and the people that have been involved in that for the last 10 years that did that, including the politicians that were involved. I mean, everybody played a part in that. So I think we're in pretty good shape, but we're not there. We need jobs. We need economic development. We need to continue to grow. We are, and I mean, grow our economic base. There's a second part to that question, and I...
Well, it was including assistance to existing businesses.
Oh, right. Well, it's a couple of ways to do that. I think we have to use all the tools in our toolbox, and one of those is urban renewal. You know, I was disappointed when we closed the Hilltop Urban Renewal. I think it was a little too soon. I think if we'd kept that open, we'd have had a library and a new police station. But, you know, it is what it is, and it happens, so now we have to find other ways to do that. I think urban renewal is a great tool, if it's used properly. I think you can abuse it, and you've seen it at the town center, and I think it has been abused at times. But it's a good, it's a good tool, and I think we all have to learn how to use it and use it effectively. How do we support the current businesses? Well, I think we all need to be involved more with the businesses. I think we need to start and continue a Buy Oregon City program. You know, let's be focused on what we're doing there. Look at who's coming in, look at the large corporations that are trying to move in, and make sure that's what's going to happen for our community.
All right. How do you address the fact that sometimes the city commission makes unpopular decisions, and how would you relate to individuals whose opinion differs significantly from your own?
That hardly ever happens.
Well, that's good.
That's great.
At least when I was on the commission, we didn't have that problem.
That's great.
No, you know, you're going to upset 50% of the people most of the time. So being on the planning commission was a good lesson in that, and of course, being on the commission before was good, too. But the planning commission is unique in that you can only deal with facts. You don't, you can't feel good. You can't say, well, I don't think this is going to be good for the city. You have to have facts because you're going to court. So everything you say will and can be used against you. So, you know, that made me very, that made me look very closely at just the facts. I tend to make my decisions based on the facts, based on the testimony, and when it all comes down to it, is it good for the community as a whole? That's how I make my decisions. And so, how do I deal with other people? You know, everybody's got an opinion. That's a fact. I can, you can only offer yours. Yes, I like to argue. Yes, I like to make my point. And, you know, if you get, you get a vote, and if you have enough votes, you win. If you don't, you don't.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Well, it's gone through a battle, as I said, up and down. We had two at one time. I wish we still did. Like I said, I think the urban, the Hilltop Urban Renewal District was a very valuable tool that we should have kept a little bit longer. How is it used? I think it's been used pretty well. I don't think it's been used so effectively all the time. I think from a historical standpoint, giving dollars to enhance the historic properties within that district is, was a great opportunity, and a lot of people took advantage of it. How you invest those dollars, you know, I think is the key. That's what's really important. How would I do that? Well, it depends on the application. It depends on the opportunity. Do I think we should invest money in a development if it makes sense for the community? Yep, I think so. I think we very well can, as long as there's a return on that investment. I don't believe in giving people money and walking away and just expecting that good is kind of going to come from that. I want to see the return on investment, and I want to see it upfront. That's how I would approach, that's how I did approach urban renewal, and that's how I continue to approach urban renewal.
Thank you.
Okay. What are the strengths you will bring to the commission?
Well, I think leadership. I think I have a good reputation in the community. I don't see, nobody's complaining so far, so I feel okay. I think I've done a good job on the planning commission. I think I did a fairly good job on the city commission. I was relatively young and relatively new in the city, so I wasn't as educated as I should have been. I admit that. But overall, I think I have built a good reputation, and I think I have good relationships with the county. I think I have good relationships with the water board, or have had, anyway. Things have changed, of course, and other cities outside the area. So, you know, I think I can bring some leadership to the organization, and I think I have some experience, and I think that would be real helpful, especially in land use, because it's something that's not easy to learn, and I swear I would never do it. I swore I would never be on the planning commission. But, you know, it was probably one of the greatest things I could ever do, for really getting a good understanding of how a city develops.
Great. Thank you.
This position requires a significant time commitment, not only for city commission meetings, which are much shorter than the time you served before, but for senior committee meetings as well. Do you have an adequate time to devote to this position, and what is your long-term goal for future involvement in the city commission?
Well, good question. Do I have the time? I do have the time. I generally, I am fine in the evenings. I work full-time, so that's always a challenge, and I'm off in the middle of the week, so Tuesdays and Wednesdays are very good for me. So those kind of, I can do a lot of things during that period of time. Anytime after 6 o'clock, I'm good, so I feel like I've, and I've proven that I can, to be there, and I'd be there on time, and I'm pretty efficient at what I do. Extremely well organized, so I can pretty much handle more than one thing at a time. So what's my future plan? You know, at this time, I don't know. You know, I've said that I wasn't going to go any much further until my children were gone, so I could spend time with them, and I've done that, and now they're gone. So if the opportunity's there, and it makes sense for me, then I will, I could very well continue and maybe run for the commission position again or something else. At this point, I don't know. Whatever the opportunity is, we'll look at it.
Great.
But whatever I do, I will be involved in some volunteer piece. I've tried to stay involved, no matter what I'm doing, in something.
Thank you.
And why do you feel that you're the best candidate for the city commission?
Well, I think, again, my, one of the things, my longevity, and I know I just followed Mary Coates, so she's got me beat, but...
I know.
But, and I hate falling married to these things, because she's got quite a laugh going. But I do, I do think I have leadership, and I think I do have a good, solid understanding of the community. I have a great relationship with staff. I respect them, and I think they respect me, and I think that goes a long way in getting things done, and getting things done efficiently and effectively. So that's, you know, I may not be the best candidate. Honestly, Rocky, I can't tell you for sure. I think I'm pretty good. I think I'll do a good job, but I guess that decision's up to you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or ask us?
No, I don't think so. I'm pretty, I've been, I watch the meetings regularly, so I kind of stay up on things. So, yes, I have no life. That was the next question, Doug. I guess it's coming. But I, no, I just want to thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, and best of luck on your decision, and I know you're right, neither, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You, too.
Thanks, man.
[inaudible] Ray, thank you very much for applying. We've got a set of comment questions that we're asking everybody. And you didn't get, you didn't get a preview of them, did you? Okay, good. Anyway, Betty will start, and... Was that, was that, was that possible? Could I?
It's too late. It's too late. You're out of luck.
No, wait. Nancy said no.
No. I didn't get the memo.
Nobody got the memo. No one did. So we're all even.
Okay, good.
All right.
Well, it's good to see you guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for applying, Ray. So tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Well, I actually grew, funny enough, not funny enough, but I grew up being around American Red Cross. My mom was a disaster coordinator, so she took me along to disasters and stuff. I was growing up in Orange County, and I got, I got to see a lot of, a lot of people really doing some good stuff, and, you know, I served firemen when they were, you know, trying to put out fires, when that was going from rooftop to rooftop. And so I kind of had instilled in me from an early age, I mean, 1980, you know, I was nine years old, and I was serving the firemen, and people were getting evacuated, and so I really, it really instilled in this, the service need to serve, and it's kind of been a path of mine forever, even though I went on off-roading a few times and got back on the path. So, community-wise, two years ago, I met a gal named Joan, great gal, and I was in the Hillendale Neighborhood Association, or I was in the Hillendale Neighborhood, and she said, you know, you should come to a meeting. So I went to the meeting, and I went, wow, this is pretty, pretty cool that, you know, people could, could go and make a difference and sit in and actually be a partner with the city. And then she invited me to the Citizen Involvement Council meeting. She said, you should go. We do it once a month at the Firehouse. So I showed up, and I sat in the back. There was no Joan. I was like, where's Joan? So I'm still waiting for her to come in, because she invited me, and she said I should come in. And then they, they did the roundtable, and they explained that she had stepped down. I'm wondering if this is a difference Joan than I'm thinking. So then, some guy with a big, long beard looks back at me. Maybe it was Santa Claus, I don't know. So everybody's looking at me, and then at the end of that night, I got a map of the Hillendale Neighborhood. So I became the chair, and I got to tell you, even though I was a little, I was a little confused, it actually felt, felt right. And I really appreciate that Joan didn't show that night, because she had done so much on her own, and I, and, you know, even seeing what she had done on her own with not a lot of people coming, and that kind of got me motivated to step in or say, okay, I'll take the map, and I won't throw it away.
Well, thanks for stepping up.
Now, what, what do you see as the role of the city commission in the decision-making process of the city?
You know, kind of like what I do for a day job, kind of like the voice. I kind of realize, realize that, what, we have about 25, 30,000 people in Oregon City, and I don't think they can all fit in these commission chambers.
You might be right.
So, I mean, you could try, if you get a VW, and try to put that in here, too, but I see it as, as you're representative of the citizens, and you're their voice.
What is your understanding on the relationship between how the commission, city manager, and staff work together?
Well, I see those, they're three separate, to me, I think they'd be three separate entities, but on the same team. I see the, the commission as helping be a liaison to the city manager and him going on to the city staff, so.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the current city commission goals, and if so, do you consider any one of them more important than the others?
You know, I did, I did go on the website and look around and stuff, and I, I did check out the goals, and I really appreciate that I did that, because a lot of, some of them are in line with some of my goals for the city or that I hope to see. Some, some goals, let me see, I like, you know, because I have a tourism background and also a film background, I love, I love that heritage and arts is on there, so that's a, I think, really a vibrant thing for the community. Plus, we have so many artists, and there's just a tremendous talent base, both in leadership and in art, and just different kind of businesses, that is so saturated wonderfully in Oregon City. Other goals that I kind of was checking out is, is the relationship with Clackamas County. I think that's a good goal, since the hub is in Oregon City, and I, I could see that partnerships there could be more broad and worked on. Other than that, they, they're kind of in line with what I'm thinking, and then, of course, the economic development is a big piece, too.
Thank you.
Great. So what do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? Do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
That's a good question. I mean, it depends on who you're talking to, what the, what the problems and opportunities are, but, you know, I'm the, I'm kind of a pretty optimistic person, and I kind of think a lot of the problems are opportunities. For instance, like the end of the Oregon Trail, that's an incredible opportunity, even though it's, it's sitting there underutilized, I mean, the potential is great. So it's not a, to me, it's not a real problem, because it's, it's there underutilized, so it's showing you, it's giving you enough space to think about what could be, you know, and you wouldn't have that unless it was continuing, you know, going on. I think, let me see, for, for other, other problems, areas, I think, again, going back to the city-county unity, I see there's, there's some threads that are, that could be worked on. I think that would really be a great advantage to do a little bit more partner building. Another thing is, problem areas, gosh, I see so much good stuff. I think any empty storefront is a problem area, so it would be nice that if there was never, if somebody was leaving, there would be 10 people waiting, and that, I think, is a problem area, that there shouldn't be any empty storefronts.
Great. Thank you.
That comes to me, so I got to turn the page. What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City, and what do you think we, as a city, can do to promote economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses? It's almost following up on what you just commented on.
Well, yeah, going back to that, is, I think, an empty storefront, to me, is, is something that, you know, talking about, if you're saying health, you use it as a metaphor, that if there's an empty storefront, it means you got to check the temperature. The temperature, it might have a little bit of a fever, it might, you know, cold coming on, so you got to make sure that you get the good vitamin C in there, which is partner building. Like, my last six years have been... Like, my last six years have been spent partner building and just really getting a lot of people to, to, to see the value in, in partnering with people that they considered a competitor. And I think that right there is, is, is the big issue in economic development is people see, you know, you know, if you're a restaurant and this restaurant wants to come in, oh, no, no, I want to be the restaurant. Not saying that restaurants do, but I think that kind of, that kind of attitude, you know, can be rampant in, in any community. But the more and more people say, you know, you're going to, you're going to dine here, you've still got to eat at night. So, you know, that partner building, I think, is a big stimulus in economic growth because that support really needs to be utilized.
Great.
How would you address the, the fact that the City Commission sometimes makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals whose opinion differs from your own?
That's a good one. Um, you know, I've, I've had some really strong experience in, like, the motion picture business. And a lot of times, a, a piece of equipment would malfunction and you, when, when it comes to film, the film industry, if you have one person sitting around waiting, that means 100 people are waiting. And in that, in that sense, time is money. And so what we had to do was just focus on the, the bottom line, getting the equipment up and running so that the, the, the film could keep on going. So that's, that's how I deal with, with that kind of issue, is, is know what the end product is. It's kind of like, funny enough, I liken it to, if you open a washing machine in the middle of the, of the cycle, it looks really bad. It looks really kind of messed up, but you just got to know that in the end, it's going to come out and it's going to be, it's going to be all right.
I like that analogy.
Yeah. Which reminds me, I got laundry to do after this. It's bothering me.
I've got a front loader, it'd be a real problem.
That's good for me, Ben. That's great.
Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Um, urban renewal, I'm, I'm pretty new to that. I, I do know that it's, it's helped in some situations to better the, the property value and, and like streets and better the livability or, not the livability, but the, in the business sense, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what are the strengths you will, you would bring to the City Commission?
Um, strengths? Uh, well, you know, being, being in the private sector for so long, I've dealt with a lot of different, different personalities, different melting pots and, and then I spent six years in, in the government. So, one good thing about where I'm working currently is, is I have the ability to work with so many different, different people and different entities. Like, for instance, if I'm working for, to help people with events, you got the events that are watched over or coordinated by people that work for the city of Westland, so there's a government employee. Then you have these incredible event coordinators that may work for the high school. Or there's other event coordinators that, you know, they're, they're stay-at-home moms and this is, this is their passion. So what I bring to the Commission is my ability to speak to the people in the way that they're going to listen to and, you know, depending on where they're coming from. So I have a really strong ability to do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Now, this position requires a fair amount of time commitment, not only for the City Commission meetings, but to committees that you might be assigned to. Do you have an adequate time to devote to this position and what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the City Commission?
I'll, I'll turn down dates. I, I have...
Well, maybe with fellow commissioners.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I, this is important to me. I've, I've gotten what somebody says the bug. So, and, and I'm okay. I'm not, I don't need an exterminator. I, I really want to, I really want to put my enthusiasm into something. You know, I've, I've never felt more home than I do in, in Oregon City and I moved a lot growing up. So it feels really home and I, and the, the ability to actually make a difference is just incredible. And I think a lot of the systems don't realize that they can make a difference. And that's, that's enough for me to, to make time.
Okay, thank you.
Why do you think you're the best choice for City Commissioner?
Well, I've never been a City Commissioner, but I do know what I bring to a team and I, and I know I, part of, I've, I've been, you know, in my, the private enterprise in my jobs and stuff, I've been the only employee. But I've also been an employee of many. And what I bring, although I've never been a City Commissioner, I, I, I know what it's like to be a part of a team. I know how to be a part of a team and to feel responsible. And I also know what it's like to be an individual and make those individualistic decisions. And I think, to me, the Commission, you have to think on your feet and you have to be a part of team and know that everybody, everybody has the role and everybody's, everybody has an important part, whether they're, they're involved in, in a side committee or whether they're, they're at the forefront or they're, they're behind. They all have that team that they have to be a part of. And that's what I, I think would make me a good Commissioner.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or questions that you would like to ask of us?
Good question. I probably would have 100, but, you know, I know you guys have a small amount of time. But I just, I appreciate you, you doing this and, and I do appreciate just, just the real open-door policy that Oregon City has to people that are new and want to make a difference. And, and I really want to instill that in, in the citizens. When I first started, you know, being involved in the Citizen Evolvement Council, there was the, this roundtable, the first roundtable that I was involved in. And they were like, what, what do you see the Citizen Evolvement Council role with the city and, and whatnot? And everybody seemed, they, they were very positive and I really enjoyed listening to it, but I, I never heard the word partner. And I was like, you know, this, we're losing it because, or not losing it, but we're, we're missing something, is that the more you feel like a partner with the city rather than us, them, in any situation, not really the citizen involvement, but you, you hear it on the street. You hear it day to day. It's like, oh, them, thus, us and them. It's not us and them. We're, it's a partnership. And that's, that's one thing I'm, I'm excited about for the future of Oregon City, is that people can grasp that. And, and working with the Tourism Department and working with getting those partnerships, lodging properties, we'll sit down with lodging properties and decide on campaigns and together. And you're sitting, looking at these two lodging properties' sales managers, they're really competitors, but right now, they're partners. And that's, that's what I really think Oregon City offers to any citizen is, is if we can just really get the, the thinking of partnership replaced with us and them would be great.
Great, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
And then the Oregon Trail should have a, a railroad track on it.
That's all it takes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, I think you may have walked by just now, so. The, we appreciate your coming. We've had 10 excellent applications and we're asking everybody the same questions. And so we begin with Betty.
So, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities, your experience with local government and community service, and why you wish to serve.
Sure. So, my name is Derek Metzen. I'm resident of Oregon City. Born and raised over on the west side and went to school down Eugene, graduated from there, came back, moved into Portland. And my wife and I deliberated when we decided to buy a house where we're going to settle down and make home. And we chose Oregon City. Her family goes back here several generations. We enjoy the community and so that's, that's why we chose here. I guess my interest in, in local politics started my freshman year of high school. It sounds a little cheesy, but...
You got the bug.
Yeah, I guess it started with, with Tom Hughes, with Metro Council President. He was my homeroom teacher and my sixth teacher.
Oh.
And he really inspired me to get involved during summer and winter breaks. We'd ride the same bus from Beaverton to Washington Square. He worked at Meyer and Fragg, I worked at Nordstrom. And so we'd chat about local politics and city council and all the things that he was involved with. And I went to a few of his meetings and that's kind of where it started.
That's great.
So, so committees, from my application, I probably, quite a few. Probably the one that is closest to governance is VLI. It's an educational institution. It's a nonprofit and it focuses on responsible land management, policy and planning. And we organize opportunities for people to eat together and, and discuss regional issues such as clean water, land management, of course, regional resources and other things that kind of fall into this bigger question of, is it a social issue, is it a private issue, how we kind of manage those things and so.
Great, thank you.
Very good. What do you see as the role of the City Commission in the decision, in the decision-making processes that we go through in the city?
Well, it's the elected officials that represent our city and kind of oversee some of the staff and some of the decisions that are made. I think it's responsibility is probably the best word to use it. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
What is your understanding of the relationship between how the City Commission, City Manager, and Staff work together?
Well, there's a couple of different ways to put that. The City Manager is directly responsible for conveying information to you guys, so you can make informed policy decisions. He can defer some of that information to other staff members to provide that to you. Requests that you guys have generally go through David. That, unless it's someone else that's providing that information, then, then it would be appropriate to go through that person. So, thank you.
Are you familiar with the current Commission goals and if so, do you think any are more important than others?
That's an excellent question. I think you guys have a lot of things on your plate right now. And, you know, I, I may be mistaken by what you say by goals, if there's specific goals that you set in your...
These appear on the wall.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, to be honest, I'm, I'm not familiar with enough of those to really give an educated answer. I guess, sex is not necessarily the government's job to provide financial health, it's private industry. But there's certainly things you can do, such as urban renewal and enhancing blighted areas and locations like where the library ends up going. Obviously, that'll spur commerce in that location. I think a large part of it is enhancing livability, if I was picking between those six.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. What do you see as the three most important issues facing Oregon City over the next two to three years? And do you have any suggestions for how the city could meet or overcome these challenges or opportunities?
I think in, in the short term plays a lot into long term. There's obviously been a lot of decisive divisiveness in some of the opinions about how to go about urban renewal and some of the larger projects that are on our doorstep. And I think there's definitely some, some healing that needs to happen there, first and foremost. Secondly, I think we're at a real pivotal point. It's hard to tell where the economy's going to go in, in the next three years, but there's obviously some folks who are interested in investing in us now. And so managing those relationships appropriately is, is important. You know, I, I think a huge one, considering the heritage area that might go through, is, is the mill. I know the city and the county and Metro have looked at doing something there. That's a huge investment. And some of the other very large tangible investments are also pretty big. And I wish it wasn't just kind of real estate sort of thing. There's obviously, obviously social issues and, but it does play into some of the social issues with trying to maintain, you know, a local economy that's going well. Some of our programs like BiLocal has done good things to spur that on. And I think as, as city leaders, if we focus on that effort and try and encourage those things by showing up to, you know, local picnics at the Carnegie Center and different things like that, that we can show our support in some of those efforts.
Great, thank you.
What is your view of the overall economic health of Oregon City? What do you think we as a city can do to provide economic development and overall business development, including assistance to existing businesses?
Um, we lost our largest employer. I think that's, that's a big, that's a big thing to say right there. I think it would probably help to have some conversations with local cities that have done really well with economic development. I'm really excited that we have Eric. But I think bringing a lot of people to the table, mind share is a great thing. I know the, the folks over in Hillsborough would be really interested, hopefully don't listen to this, in how we converted our, our traffic on Main Street to two-way. So maybe we get our traffic engineer and theirs together, have a conversation. And maybe we can pull our economic development advisor to, together with theirs and have a conversation with what we could do to bring in some of those large companies like Intel. So how, how did they do that? How do they keep them interested in, in not moving to China? I think working with the Chamber of Commerce is always a good thing. Being very prudent in what, you know, decisions we, we make as far as courting developers or discussing urban renewal with, with future discussions, I think, is, is important. A lot of people are going to be interested in, well, not only the site adjacent to Metro, but the Blue Heron site as well. So, and they're all going to ask for urban renewal. And I don't know which way you guys are going to go, since I have a floor right now and it suggests seven folks would be a prudent decision. But being the five of you, four of you plus one and then, and then two folks from the city, I think would be good, so.
Thank you.
How would you address the fact that the City Commission sometimes makes unpopular decisions? And how would you relate to individuals whose opinion differs from your own?
Oh, I think listening goes a long ways and asking for a lot of information on the forefront. Opening up to, to comment and sometimes giving people more than three minutes if nothing else makes them feel as if they've been heard. And I, I think if people feel like they've been heard, then they don't walk away with bitter feelings. That's just my impression. I have the pleasure of telling clients, not all the time, but often enough that it pains me that news they don't want to hear. Sometimes it's land use issue that, you know, you just can't get around. Sometimes you've got to make some structural upgrades and that's going to make the project unfeasible. So I'm, I'm pretty used to giving news that, that is not always fun to hear. It's just kind of a part of your job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us what you know about urban renewal and its use in Oregon City.
Ah, it is a form of restoring blighted areas. I think that's, that's what it's there for and that's what it should be there for. I'm excited, well, I have mixed feelings about urban renewal. I think the, the free market works pretty well on its own and anytime outside engines, he's dabbling in it, it's, it's tough. But I see value in it, that we do have some blighted areas downtown. The dump is, I mean, that's our front door and that's the problem. So I, I see it as a good opportunity to encourage not only those larger developments, but some of the, the smaller businesses downtown that, that could use, you know, a new paint job or a new awning or something that's fallen off the front that shouldn't be. I think the sign program and what Lloyd Purdy is doing down there to, to help them through the process with the city, not only with the, the funds that they provide, as small it is, but some of the funds that urban renewal provides is, is a great thing, so.
Thank you. Okay, what are the strengths you would bring to the City Commission?
Um, well, I, first of all, I don't like answering questions like that. I really do enjoy listening to people and hearing what they have to say. I enjoy dialogue. I'm a little bit to the point and my wife teases me that in board games, I'm the motor that keeps it running. So I, I don't feel the need to carry things on longer than they do, than they need to. But I certainly enjoy... But I certainly enjoy and appreciate that we are better as a community than we are separately and individually. And I think that is the attitude that I would bring. I also have a real respect for the city. And we chose to live here, other than Beaverton or West Lynn or some of the other towns that I'm more familiar with, or, you know, I chose to have my practice here. I commuted downtown for several years, but when I opened my own office, it was going to be here. I think there's a lot to be said for being a part of things.
Thank you.
I think you know this, but it requires a significant amount of time to serve on the commission, not only at the commission meetings, but the committees that you might be assigned to. Do you have the adequate time to devote to the position? And what is your long-term goal for future involvement on the city commission?
That's a good question. I had a good conversation with Vicki Yates about that. That was a first concern she expressed to me. She said, you know, "You're a young father. You've got one on the way. You run your own business. Right, you're going to do this." And I put a lot of thought into that. And I think it comes down to some advice I got from my mentor years ago. And that is, cut TV out of your life and you can accomplish a lot. The average American watches 20 hours of TV a week. A week. That's almost a full work week. And so my wife and I decided not to own a TV. My mom bought us one for Christmas a couple of years ago, and it's still sitting in the garage. So, yeah.
There you go.
And why do you feel that you'd be the best choice for city commissioner? I have a feeling that's the one you're going to hate, too.
I have a feeling you're right.
Well, you know, I know a few of the other folks that are applying, so I certainly won't degrade them. I think they're good folks. But I think I have a pretty good understanding, perhaps, not of those six goals, but of the issues at hand, what the city's been dealing with, and how a number of people in the city have felt. And I think that's probably what I bring to the table, that I would be most proud of, that it's the folks that are around me that say, you know, this is what's important. And then I've intentionally put myself in the positions to be an ear to those folks. Whether we align politically or not, I want to hear those opinions and I'd like to represent them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One more.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Yes.
They were getting excited there.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself or questions you'd like to ask of us?
Well, who is considering running for another term and why?
I can't.
You can't.
Well, yeah, you could wait two years.
Then I'd be in my mid-70s. No, thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I didn't ask the question, looking at Rocky, because I know...
Yeah. Honestly, I haven't decided. And it's a question I ask myself every day.
Yeah.
Sometimes more than once a day. And I really haven't decided. And I want to be able to look at, you know, you have to weigh a lot of factors with that, as you know. And one of the things I'm weighing in my mind is, did I accomplish the things that I wanted to accomplish in the time that I was here? I feel that I have, for the most part. I feel that the things that are on my list that are left to be tackled can probably come within the next year. And honestly, the other thing that is weighing on my mind is, you know, I have a lot of time to do more of this later on. And so I have a lot of things that I want to do. I'm looking at the age thing as well. I'm 35, and I'm happy with what I've achieved in the three years that I've been here and what I will in the four. And I'm seeing if I run for another term, that I'll be 40. And maybe there's other things I want to do right now. So I have to weigh all that. And that's not going to be an easy decision, because I really love this town and I really feel that it's important for me to do the things that I feel passionate about. I think the one thing that really, really is hard for me right now is living in this town my entire life, waiting for the change to happen, and seeing it happen right now at the time that I was almost giving up. And I honestly see it happening. I see our city changing. I see it becoming a place that I'm really excited about. And now I feel like, oh, my gosh, it's starting to happen. I maybe need to stay to focus on it. And one of the things especially is things like the mill, things that are happening downtown. Especially our historical, you know, museums, things like that are on the verge of changing over. There's this feeling that almost everything is at a clean slate, ready to shift into the next future, whatever Oregon City is going to be. And for all this time waiting, I want to be a part of it, and so that's really tugging on me. And I won't make a decision until the day that I have to decide. And I don't know what it's going to be, honestly, but it is something that I think about way too much every day. And so I don't have an answer for that yet, but it's a lot of factors, for sure.
And the end of the Oregon Trail Museum?
Well, we're going to try to make that accessible by the beginning of 2013. There's a specific motivation for that. What is it? The California Oregon Trails? What is the name of the group?
OCTA, Oregon California Trails Association. They're having a conference, essentially a national conference, that they're hosting in this area. They definitely want a majority, if possible, of the conference to happen in Oregon City and are working towards that. And I think the feeling as a city is, if a conference to that level is going to happen, especially in Oregon City, we have to be ready for it and we have to be able to offer the use of that building and that site in some way. And so I think that with all the priorities that we have in the city, unfortunately, right now, the interpretive center is not on the top of the list of priorities. But the timeframe with that event coming up next year, I think, puts it on the radar to make the initial step into what the next future of that site is going to be. And my hope is that at least a minimal use of that building, especially for specific events such as this one, could drive the renewal of that building and lead us to what the future of it's going to be. But that's yet to, you know, be decided.
I was just going to say a related thing. Historically, maybe a bit more significant is the Herbert Singer House. And of course, you've been on the historic review board. It's important. We're raising funds. We've been fairly successful in trying to get that house restored and accessible. And that's a major process in terms of the heritage, that being the only remaining Hudson's Bay structure in the United States, so.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I was curious about the interpretive museum, just because I haven't heard anything about it in a long time.
Yeah.
You know, it's a large building, a large investment, and it needs to go to the wayside. And if it sits vacant for two years, then you'll have other problems.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You're right.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
I need a minute or two.
While they're filling in their paperwork, what did the audience think of our questions?
Very good questions. I think you did a good job.
Good feedback?
Well, we decided each to take the same question over and over, so we didn't screw up worse than we did.
Yeah.
After the sixth time, you get to give it out.
We got it down at the very end. I can do it.
And by the way, we didn't write the questions that we read.
That's true.
I was wondering, who wrote the questions?
Well, I mean, I was saying we didn't personally write the questions we read. We worked together to create the list. And I think part of it's based on this process that we've gone through before, yeah.
Yeah.
We are on record to record.
Yeah.
That's good. All right.
Well, I was going to make kind of the same suggestion I did before. Maybe if we wanted to discuss at this point where our top three were for each one of us? Do you want to proceed that way, or do you care to wait until the meeting?
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Or you don't get a choice.
Are you going to keep a log, sort of?
Well, you can have my sheet.
Okay.
However you wish.
Who wishes to start?
Well, I'll start.
Okay. Then we go in the same order that we did in the questions.
Oh, okay. That's good. That's good. Well, I have to say, we had really good candidates, really good questions and answers. Some things that came out that I think that we'll have to discuss as a commission to make sure we're getting our message out to the general population. But my top three that stood out to me were Carol Polly, Bill and Tim Powell.
I have them in a different order, but I have exactly the same people.
Now I've got this wrong. I got arrows going whichever way. Well, we filled out a matrix. And the matrix, though, at least in what I filled in, was solely based on interviews, so...
Yes.
Me, too.
So that doesn't, so I guess my top three on this matrix is not necessarily my top three overall. And I want to think through that a little bit more. I mean, there was definitely, my top three in terms of interviews were the same, as mentioned previously. I felt that those three candidates had the best answers, the best knowledge, and even to somewhat the most experience. However, I was very taken by some of the comments that Kevin Yell made, which, I'll paraphrase this, but he made a comment about the need that maybe what we're looking for is something, a specific characteristic or specific needs or interests that we're looking for right at this moment, that might dictate a choice. I feel that we have other candidates, too, that fit that category and have very unique specific skills, one of which is the need to kind of heal the process that we've gone through.
Oh, absolutely.
But also bring some very strong skills in issues that we're going to be facing specifically in this year. If you look at some of our goals with critical facilities needs, goals that pertain to economic development, which very much, I think, field ties with marketing the city, our tourism, things like that. I think in some of those goals specifically for the year, that some of the candidates that may not have been extremely knowledgeable on the day-to-day business of how the commission runs, bring skill sets that fit our goals in even maybe a better way than some of the others. So I don't think it's as easy just to fill in a matrix and say that these are the top three that interviewed. I definitely want to think over it, but I think that there are other considerations to be made. Yeah, so I'm not sure that I know my top three at this moment yet. So I'm still working with that. I definitely have a top five, I think. But I want that to settle in, because I think that there's so many aspects here that I still want to think through and go back through even the resumes a little bit, but I don't know what you...
Well, mine were very different, but Kevin Yell is the one that stood out for me for exactly the same reasons, saying that we were, maybe needed to do something very specific to this time. And then looking at his historic and entrepreneurial background and needing healing at this time, I just think he fit that category very well. But like Rocky, I would like to go back over the resumes or the CVs again and just think about it a little bit more.
Do you have another two?
Oh, excuse me. Yes. Yell, Gordon and Metzen.
Did you say Ray Gordon? Ray Gordon?
All right.
Yeah, I think that, I think my top five are probably the same, the same three, and with the addition of the two mentioned after that, Yell and Gordon.
Do you believe that we need more information other than we have in our resumes?
Because we need a background check.
Well, only if they submit.
Right.
I mean, that's voluntary. We could request, if we wanted to, the city manager to do a background check on those that agreed to it. I don't know if any, have you got signatures on all of them, or if you were able to look at that?
We have, for those that submitted, we have submitted that.
Okay.
Good.
There always is one ahead.
Do you, I mean, do you feel that the background check is really a background check in terms of criminal activity or things of that nature? Do you feel we need that?
I don't.
I don't either. Rocky?
To make a decision? You mean?
You have the background check?
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean...
Well, one point, whoever it is needs to have it done.
I don't, well, you might say that, but I don't know if background checks were done on any of us, actually. on any of us.
No, because we discussed this, because we were all in the political eye, so the newspaper would have dug up any...
That's true.
So that was the recommendation from the city manager, I thought.
Well, actually, I think I put that forward, too.
Can we get it down to three, maybe we could do it?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, we get it down to three, let's go ahead and do the background check at that point. That makes sense. All background checks are done.
Oh. So there you go.
Yeah. I'm going to ask a question on the background checks. You know, things are supposed to be done in executive session. I don't want to embarrass anybody. Can those be just sent to us via email? They might enter into our decision.
Then it'd be public record, right?
No, they're not public record.
They're not part of the record.
They're not part of the record.
They're exempt from disclosure.
And so we could, we as individual commissioners, could look at them and see if we have any concerns.
I need to check with the city attorney on that. I don't believe so.
Then we cannot.
Then I guess what was the point of it?
It's the result of it. Let me out, David. I'm not exactly sure, because it's never, we've never done it before, so I'm...
Well, I mean, my assumption was that we could do these things and then make some kind of evaluation based on it. If that was the case, I don't know what we have to process.
I think, depending on what's on the consent form, that it may actually be a public record. So I think that's what we have to check on tomorrow.
Well, it's all a public record, it's whether it's disclosable or not.
Yeah, my question is, if it's just possible to send us copies of the background check?
We'll check and see.
You know, if it becomes a concern in the procedure, then that's one thing. But I would not want to necessarily embarrass anybody if somebody got arrested for drunken, discerned misconduct at the age of 16, you know, I don't think I'd be that concerned about it.
It's not going to take more than an hour to figure out whether or not we can release this, and to what extent. The question will be, though, which ones, how many?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait till you get those?
Yeah, let's see where we get on our final three. And if, you know, I'm not that concerned whether we make a decision at the next commission meeting or not. I'd like to have it sooner than later, but the point is, it's important to make a decision that we all feel comfortable with, for one thing. And so we'll devote some time to it at our next commission meeting.
It's on the agenda.
But we may not come to a decision at that particular point. I mean, we've got some great candidates, and...
So then where are we at?
Well, I think, unless there's anything more than that, we've got essentially six people that we've had put forward as a group, so these are the six, I presume, we're going to talk about the next time.
Is that correct, Rocky and Kathy?
Was it five or ten?
I thought five.
Well, you said Kevin, Ray, and Metzen.
There's six.
Oh, well, she, yeah, I didn't say that.
Yeah, so she had three different than we did, so we've got six.
So those are the three, or six we're going to talk about, correct?
Yes.
We narrowed it from 10 to six.
Well, if somebody throws in another one, but six is plenty.
I think so. So we're good with talking about the six?
Now, Mary, does that mean you want, does the commission want us to then go ahead and advance, if possible, the background information on the six?
Well, this is my question. Is there anything in there that we should be concerned with?
I mean, you would have...
The only response that we are giving is whether or not there's a criminal record. That's the only, it doesn't go into any detail.
And I'm sure that you would have, like, said, "This is a red flag."
No, they would, they say criminal record or not.
And just so you know, there's a very big difference between a background check and a criminal records check. What Nancy's talking about is a criminal records check, only. So it's going to tell you one thing, is there a criminal history on this person?
Yeah.
And it's going to be a yes or no. It's not going to tell you anything else.
That's fine.
And we have those sent to us, and we do not have to, I mean, they might enter our individual opinions, but I don't think there are any things that we need to discuss in public.
So if possible, do you want it on those six, or do you want to wait till you narrow it further?
I would say...
Well, she already got them done.
Yeah.
We'll send it if we can tomorrow.
Then I think we're adjourned, and that makes it a half hour early, I believe.
Congratulations.